See and hear, but they may not know how to tell you. Pay attention to their fears and let them know that you care. And remember, a big hug says a lot.
You're watching KPTS, Channel 8.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
Good morning, I'm Kristy Zuckovich. Welcome to the July 29th Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We are glad you're joining us today. It is a kind of special meeting here today, commissioners. This is the first of our budget public hearings. We would remind folks that we will have our second public hearing on Thursday, August 6th at 6:00 PM. Of course, you can always go to our website at sedgewickcounty.org and participate in our online public hearing. But commissioners, pretty short meeting this morning if you look at the number of agenda items, but we do have public hearing and we have lots of folks here and lots of folks in overflow, so that's a good thing that people are interested in county government. But Commissioner Howell, you tipped us last week that it's Commissioner Norton's birthday, so what a party for you, Commissioner Norton, all these people.
Thank you, Kristy, and I thank a lot of you for already posting on Facebook and recognizing that it is my birthday. Sixty-eight years old today and I feel like I'm 15 still, so thanks for, you know, we'll have cake and punch later, but it's liable to be eight o'clock tonight. Thank you, Kristy.
You bet. Well, commissioners, I know that folks are anxious to talk and I know that you're anxious to hear, so Chairman Ransaw, how about if we just get the meeting underway?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Kristy. With that, we'll call to order the special meeting for the Board of the Sedgwick County Commissioners for July 29, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invocation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Chairman Ransaw.
Present. Next item.
New business. Item A, election of a Kansas representative to the governing board of the National Association of Counties for a two-year term, September 1, 2015 through August 31, 2017, by mail ballot.
Mister, you have the item before you. What's the role of the board?
Well, we are no longer in NACO, so I don't know that it matters who the Kansas representative's going to be. I've worried that maybe we're not even going to be in the Kansas Association of Counties the way we're going with our partnerships and relationships with people. So this is much as do about nothing for me. Now, having said that, I served as the president of the Kansas Association of Counties and was very active in NACO on four of their steering committees. I know Richard Malm and Dr. Steve Garten, who are county commissioners in the state of Kansas very well, have served with them for many years on boards at the state level. Either one of them would be excellent representatives. And I think Steve has been on the board before. I think Richard would like, he's from Jefferson County, I believe, would like to be on it, so I would be okay with either one of them if we're going to move forward with something like this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we elect Richard Malm to the position of Kansas Representative in NACO.
Second. Just a point of clarification, we actually are in NACO until December 31st of this year. And we are a member of the Kansas Association of Counties and there's no plans to change that, and that's been made very clear. With that being said, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item B, public hearing regarding the 2016 Sedgwick County Budget.
Good morning, commissioners. Ron Holt, acting county manager. As Kristy said, at the opening of the meeting, this is the first two public hearings that you will conduct on the 2016 budget. The second one is next Thursday, August 6th at 6:00 PM in the evening. It'll be in this room as well. And again, both of these hearings are regarding the Sedgwick County 2016 recommended budget. The 2016 recommended budget for Sedgwick County, as presented on Monday, July 20th, totaled $394,143,119, which includes a property tax levy of $129,580,173. This property tax levy, as we talked about on Monday, is equivalent to an estimated, last Monday, is equivalent to an estimated property tax rate expressed in meals of approximately 29.359 meals. On Wednesday, July 22nd, the Board of County Commissioners authorized publication of a maximum budget of $394,625,119, which includes a property tax levy of $130,103,986. The maximum property tax levy is equivalent to an estimated property tax rate of approximately 29.478 meals. And as we've had a lot of discussion about, both meal levy rates are based on estimated assessed valuation and subject to review and technical adjustments. With that, commissioners, I believe with the number of people wanting to speak, that's all I would say as opening remarks, and I would recommend you get on with the public hearing.
Any questions for the manager?
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing with respect to the 2016 Sedgwick County Budget. I want to say a couple of things so everyone knows kind of the guidelines here. Everyone will be given three minutes to speak, and the clerk will keep the time and let you know when that time has expired and we'll ask you to wrap up. Please give your name and address for the record. If you have any copies of testimony, you don't have to, but if you happen to have paper copies, just make sure Ron gets a copy because we like to make copies ourselves and enter them into the record. I'll apologize now in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. I'll try to do the best I can. And we're planning at noon to take a 30-minute lunch break because we expect to be here that long, but for, so everyone knows for planning purposes, that's what we're looking at doing. With that, we'll begin with Gary O'Neil.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners and Chairman Ransaw, for allowing me to speak this morning. My name is Gary O'Neil. I live at 4967 North Hillcrest in Bel Air, Kansas. I served three terms as the mayor of Bel Air and I was chairman of the Sedgwick County Association of Cities in 2002, 2003, 2004, and part of 2005. My opinions that I'm going to express today are mine alone and have nothing to do with organizations I belong to in the past. I'm here this morning to speak regarding the proposed by the Board of County Commissioners to remove the three-mile zoning area of influence around the 17 cities that are affected in Sedgwick County. I do not think this is a time to open such a major policy issue in the absence of a planning director with the retirement of Mr. Schlegel. I think the Board of County Commissioners should focus on hiring a new planning director and take advantage of that person's expertise to advise the commission on future policy changes. The current system of a public hearing at the City Planning Commission and another one at the MAPC is a good way to give local affected people a chance to hear about and to weigh in on proposed development. The current system protects the public and gives them more say. It also protects the county commissioners by ensuring they have both sides of an issue before they vote. Most members of the MAPC know very little about local customs, development patterns, and economies of many cities in Sedgwick County. They should appreciate hearing from local planning commissions. Most developers should want to communicate directly with local communities to ensure they build strong relationships and their proposals fit into the community. All cities promote growth and development. The wisdom of local planning commissions and the city planning staff should help developers make better planning decisions that fit their communities. This system has worked since 1985, over 30 years. What is the reason for the change now? Why has this come up? Has there been a problem? Eliminating the review by local planning commission makes it more difficult for people to be involved and the risk of Board of County Commissioners only hearing one side of an issue. Why would a county commissioner want to reduce public input into decisions? Quickly, I want to read from the Tulsa World on economic development from July 14th. This is from an editorial page by the editors. It says, "Welcome. Macy's facility is a boon for the county. Area leaders, public and private, including the Tulsa Regional Chamber of Commerce, came together and worked hard to land the new Macy's Bloomingdale Fulfillments Center. And the result of hard work was evident last week when the Macy's facility offered a sneak peek at what is to come. The 1.3 million square foot facility on 72 acres of unincorporated land near Owasso will employ 1,500 core associates and at least another 1,000 seasonal employees when it comes fully operational next year. A formal dedication will take place August 6th. What will it do? It will ship millions of items to customers mostly in the middle of the country. Outbound orders are actually starting to go out last week. All those new workers will be spending money in Owasso and Tulsa, bumping up the sales tax receipts for both cities. Tulsa suburbs continue to grow, and that is good news for the entire county." I would just like to end by saying that if the current majority of the Board of Commissioners continue to reduce funding to economic development, I have six grandkids. I have one in Tulsa, I have one in Kansas City, and I have four in Wichita. And when they ask their grandpa or papa, where should they look for their future, I will encourage them to look at Tulsa or Kansas City. Thank you.
My name is Mike Burris. My address is 437 North Topeka in Wichita. Good morning, commissioners. I am the executive director of Catholic Charities for the Diocese of Wichita. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning on behalf of our Foster Grandparents Program. It was established 50 years ago as a way to establish mutually beneficial relationships between low-income, mature, wise, experienced senior citizens with children having either exceptional or special needs. Locally, the Foster Grandparent Program began in Sedgwick County in 1976, and in 1981 Catholic Charities became the sponsor. We've been operating the program for 34 years now with the generous support of the taxpayers of Sedgwick County for the past 31 years. This morning, I'd like to share with you just a small amount of information about the program and the senior citizens and the struggling children that it benefits. During the year that ended last June, our program employed 123 foster grandparents, all of whose income was at or below 200% of the poverty level. They were paid minimal but very much needed stipends of $2.65 per hour. More importantly, they benefited greatly by remaining active and productive and being great resources to the young people they were assigned to serve. They served 3,249 young people in Sedgwick County, most of whom are economically disadvantaged and/or are struggling academically. They provided 117,000 hours of caring service to the children through 58 sites, schools, Head Start, childcare centers, homeless and domestic violence shelters, et cetera. From a funding standpoint, we received, we have been receiving $23,326 from Sedgwick County the past several years, and in previous years it was higher than that. We've utilized the county funds as part of a 10% match that we're required to provide in order to receive a large federal grant from the Corporation for National Communication Services. So we've been able to parlay the $23,000 match into almost $235,000 of funding, including a $210,000 federal match. With a total foster grandparent budget of $570,000, the county has been providing 4% of the total budget, which combined with the federal grant, has funded 40% of our overall budget. In summary, I believe the residents of Sedgwick County have received a great return on their $23,000 annual investment in the Foster Grandparent Program, a program which costs less than $5 per hour in service provided. If the funding of the county, that the county has provided in the past is eliminated, it would severely limit our opportunity to place foster grandparents to do the things they do so well, serving young people. Also speaking today will be Dr. Lyndon Drew, Director of our Foster Grandparent Program and a representative of both Foster Grandparent Group and the children that they serve. Commissioners, this is a great program. We will appreciate your consideration of our request to continue providing funding for this valuable program. It benefits both the people providing the service, the aging citizens, and the people receiving the service, struggling children. Thank you for your consideration.
Good morning. My name is Lyndon Drew and my address is 437 North Topeka. Also with Catholic Charities, I am the program director for the Foster Grandparent Program. Foster grandparents are a community treasure. In April, Foster Grandparent Nan Buie won a Friend of Education Award for her work at Oakville Elementary School in Hayesville. In April, Foster Grandparents Earlene Jackson, Bernadine Gosh, and Judy Fellers won Good Apple Awards for their work at Menaha, Peterson, and Curtis Schools. In June, Foster Grandparents Lily Newman, Rachel Rubicava, Linda Johnson, Barbara Booker, Agnes Patta, Nancy Smith, June Whittit, Esther Bland, Rosie Walker, Verla Sellers, Mary Becker, and Pat Pericola won a Champion of Children Award from Child Start for the work at three Head Start Sites and three Opportunity Project Sites. Now, these grandparents are the latest of a 37-year heritage of older adults working with Sedgwick County children. It's been my privilege to work with them for 15 years, and my hope today is that Sedgwick County will continue to support their work. I have with me, and I'd like to introduce, one of our foster grandparents, Alma Liskanani, and then one of our former site supervisors, Linda Galloway.
Please give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alma Liskanani and my address is 5640 East 21st Street North, Apartment 2301, and the code is 67208. I was privileged to be introduced to the Foster Grandparents Program about five, six years ago, and I cannot tell you the immense change it has made in my life and in the life of the children we take care of. It has a two-pronged approach. It has rejuvenated the seniors and has kept us focused and have enabled us to reconnect with society and to help the kids be who they can. We still have a little bit of fire in us, and so we go to the class and we warm up their little hearts and make them look focused, make them be focused and be attentive and willing to learn. We have, I have found this experience very, very gratifying, and it's, for me, it's the purpose of living right now, because otherwise, when at 74, all we do is sit home and vegetate. But now, I look forward to going to school, helping the kids, seeing tangible results, and getting them ready for the next class. So as far as Foster Grandparents is concerned, I think it is a unique program. It is a program that should be endorsed, should be encouraged, and it does so much for us and the children. Most of these children are underprivileged, but I tell you by the end of the year, they're ready to move on, they're going to the next class. And for this reason, I would advocate that we have funding for the program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Galloway. I am a member of the Catholic Charities Foster Grandparent Advisory Board and a former supervisor of Foster Grandparents at Dodge Literacy Magnet on the west side of Wichita. And my address is 4656 Farmstead Court in Bel Air. You have heard from my friends and associates with the Foster Grandparent Program. The tasks performed by our grandparents is as varied as the colors in the rainbow. I would like to now share with you just a snippet of what was reported to us by other site supervisors and classroom teachers. Verla Sellers works at the Opportunity Project North. The staff says one child in our classroom was especially bonded with Grandma and often asked Grandma to read books with her. This child's home life is uncertain, and the consistent loving attention that Grandma V gives has improved the child's confidence and self-concept. Grandma Verla has been in that assignment for three years. June Whittit worked at the Opportunity Project South, and the staff there says, "We love Grandma June. She showed patience and kindness to a chronically sick child, spending quiet time with him during class time, letting him sit with her when he was too lethargic to play with other children on the playground. And upon his diagnosis of neuroblastoma cancer, he often reminisced of his times with Grandma June and her kindness to him." Her assignment has been three years at that site. Earlene Jackson works at Menaha Core Knowledge Magnet School, and the staff there says Earlene takes eight to 10 children each day and works individually with each child on math and reading activities. Each of these children was very low when school started, and they have shown good progress academically. 10 years at that site. Lee Garland works at Black Traditional Magnet School. The staff there says the students love to get to learn with her. Her quiet demeanor and patience helps struggling students blossom. She is organized and quite knowledgeable about how to help those late bloomers. 11 years at that site. Martha Villa works at St. Anthony Family Shelter. Here is an example of what Martha helps. St. Anthony Family Shelter had a child who refused to interact with other kids. He would not leave his mother's side without screaming, kicking, and crying. His mom started leaving him with Grandma Mama for 15 minutes at a time and gradually increased the time. One morning after breakfast, the little boy asked his mom if he could go see Grandma. He stayed in the playroom most of the morning, playing without crying. 19 years at that site with those children. "Why do I love Foster Grandma?" the children ask, or we would ask them, and these are some of their comments. "She takes me to our school library to find the funniest books that we can, and then we read together. I love Dr. Seuss the best." She tells me about books that she liked to read when she was in second grade. She liked The Boxcar Children Adventures. Grandma is never in a hurry. She waits for me to come to her room, and she always gives me a hug and a smile when she sees me. Sometimes I get a high five when we finish working on multiplication and subtraction. Grandma listened to me when I was really sad, when my kittens died. She told me about how her little dog Wiggles had died. He was really old and he couldn't walk anymore. She had to carry him everywhere, even outside to potty. She cried with me.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Your time is up. We need, we need to ask you to wrap up.
I respectfully acknowledge that, and I would only ask that you consider Foster Grandparents in the budget process and that you not reduce their funding.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think Commissioner Howell has a comment or a question.
I do, thank you very much. In fact, if you don't mind, I'd like to go back to Michael Burris for just a minute because they've had four speakers in a row speak about Foster Grandparents, and I think Michael's the most likely to be able to answer my questions. And so, Michael, if you wouldn't mind, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you, Linda. I appreciate your testimony.
You are welcome.
And Michael, I think you and I have talked about some of this privately in my office. I wanted to just establish a couple of points, I think, for the audience and for the listeners to make sure that they understand some of the details, I think, that came out in our discussion. I wanted to talk about that. Can you talk about, what was our funding level before it was the 23326? What was the funding level before that?
It was, it was in the 30s and some years before that.
And do you know about what year that was reduced?
But we've been at the 23326 for the last three years.
Okay. And when that, when that funding went down, did you guys respond by, how did you guys respond with the funding cut last time? What did you guys do?
I believe, Lyndon, correct me if I'm wrong, we probably were able to hire fewer Foster Grandparents at that point. Well, United Way funding came in when the national, when the federal budget sequester came in two years ago. At that point in time, United Way stepped up with some funding for us.
So the federal dollars had gone down a little bit, and so United Way stepped up and filled in just a little bit where that went down?
Correct.
But as far as the county funding, when it went down, did you guys find a solution to backfill some of that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Just contracted the program a little bit?
Yes.
Okay. And then, let's be clear, I wanted to talk about, you did give me an information sheet, and I want to just name some of these things and ask you a couple of questions about it. One thing you say here is 117,241 hours of care was, services provided by the grandparents to the children. Approximately 64% of that was to USD 259. And I just did a little bit of math, that's 75,034, 75034 hours in that one year was for USD 259. And I believe you're also in the other, you're in the other schools as well a little bit, is that correct?
We are.
Okay. So if you were to subtract out the public schools altogether, do you know what percentage would be outside the public schools altogether?
Outside of all public schools or 259?
All public schools.
No, but it's, it's the majority in the schools. I'm going to guess probably 80% in the schools.
And do the schools give you any type of funding for this?
We do not request it. No, they do not provide funding.
And they do make a commentary that... And they do make a commentary that the value to the USD two-five-nine specifically for what you guys provide is about one-point-five million dollars.
That's, that's their estimate.
Yes. The schools are saying they get a one-point-five million dollar benefit, but they don't provide any, any funding to that at all. Are you able to fundraise outside of United Way and the Sedgwick County Government? Are you fundraising any other way? Are you able to, able to fundraise and provide people donating into your program?
We, we are able to. It's not, with the funding that we've received from you and the United Way and the federal grant, it's not been necessary to do that at this point.
So you're not currently fundraising outside those three sources of income?
Not for Foster Grandparents, no.
But you could if you wanted to. I mean, that would be an option you have.
We could if we had to, yes.
Okay. So, you have those called Catholic Charities. The Catholic Church does not provide any funding for your program?
They provide funding for a number of our programs and for our overall Catholic Charities organization and do not specifically designate any for Foster Grandparents.
Okay. And that's what we're talking about, that it's Foster Grandparents. So they don't provide any funding for that specifically?
Correct.
Okay. That may be all my questions. I just, I guess, uh, if, uh, one more, I guess one more thing. For, for a grandparent that wants to be in this program, they have to be a certain level of income. Is that correct?
In order for us to pay them, yes.
Right. So are they able to be in the program and actually volunteer hours if they're not in, in qualified in that regard?
They can, yes. They can. Lyndon, do we have any currently that are totally volunteer? We don't right now who are volunteers.
Okay. That's, that's new information. When I talked about this in my office, you did tell me the answer to that was no.
I did.
Because that's a change of information.
Stand corrected when I got back, yes.
All right. That, that does help. Because again, if someone wants to be in the program, they don't want to, they don't have a need for that stipend, then they would be able to, to volunteer in this program if they wanted to.
That is correct.
Be around the kids and that type of thing. So do you think that this is, are the grandparents primarily doing this for the money? Then is that, is that why they're in the program?
I think, I'm gonna look at both of our, our speakers when I answer this. I think the money is important to them, but no, that's not the main reason that they're doing it.
I'm surprised there's not volunteers that are doing this that are not being paid. I guess that's just surprises me a little bit. I think there's a lot of people in the community would love to be, would love to be around kids and, and money may not be important to them and they would like to be involved in this. And so I just, I guess it's just a curious point of mine. I, you know, one-hundred percent of the people who are volunteering are, are being paid a stipend and they're qualified by income.
And I can tell you that we aggressively recruit for, for grandparents continuously and a lot of senior citizen publications, ones where we would hope to attract those kinds of people that you're describing.
All right. Well, I may have some other questions later on, but you know, that, you've done a good job and thank you for your presentation and for your information.
Thank you for your attention.
Next we have Helen Healy.
Good morning, Commissioners, everyone. My name is Helen Healy and I live at thirteen Southampton Road in Eastborough, right in the middle of Sedgwick County. I'm a past Chair of Exploration Place, the Sedgwick County Science and Discovery Center, and I just returned to the Board this year after rotating off for three years, in large part because of my concerns about what this Board of Commissioners might do to this organization that is so important to this community. My husband, Ed, is also past Chair of the Sedgwick County Zoological Society and he is very concerned also. We have lived in Sedgwick County for almost forty years, supporting and partaking of the wonderful culture and arts in this community and enjoying the quality of life here. This room is filled today with people who also care passionately about this community. But before I allow them to speak for a minute, I would like to resubmit for the record the comments of approximately twenty-five people who spoke at the May thirteenth County Commission meeting. They were there to speak on behalf of Exploration Place, the Zoo, and other organizations who have agreements with the county. Their words are still relevant today to, to the budget hearings that we're hearing today. Thank you very much.
Next we have Melissa Gregory.
Good morning, Members of the Commission and Chairman Ransow. I'm very happy to be here today. My name is Melissa Gregory and I live at fourteen forty North Gatewood, Number forty-six here in Wichita. And I am a member of the Board for the Kansas School for Effective Learning, which is more familiarly known as CANCELL. The proposed Sedgwick County budget for 2016 would eliminate eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars in funding that CANCELL uses to provide GED preparation and testing for students age sixteen to eighteen. These students are referred to us by the Juvenile Division of the District Court here in Sedgwick County. They are usually not in high school. They may have been expelled or perhaps just traditional school setting has not worked for them. Of the two-hundred students that CANCELL serves between the ages of sixteen and eighteen, seventy-five percent of them come to us with test scores in math and reading at or below the eighth grade level. The CANCELL teachers are very dedicated, I have to say, and I've been privileged to observe some of these classes. They work with them at their level and they motivate them to stay with the program and study hard and to pass the GED exams. As a result, and these figures are according to the Sedgwick County Juvenile Intake Center, ninety-eight percent of the youth enrolled in CANCELL GED prep have not committed or recommitted a crime. CANCELL has worked with the Sedgwick County Juvenile Court for seventeen years and is proud to be a proven provider of GED prep and testing. It's likely that most of the people here in this room today have, already have a high school diploma, but there are over forty thousand Sedgwick County adults who do not. These Sedgwick County citizens have limited options for employment and zero chance of advancing to higher education. The Sedgwick County Grant specifically helps cover the costs for at-risk youth to participate in the GED preparation program and in the process encourages them to start on a new path that begins with education and ends with career opportunities. I ask you to consider reinstating the funding for CANCELL in the amount of eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars in the 2016 Sedgwick County budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And now we have Mark Cook.
Good morning. My name is Mark Cook. I am a resident of Goddard at Eight Lakewood in Goddard. I'm here today on behalf of CANCELL. I'm a Board Member as well as I serve on three other Boards here in the community. And so, quality of life and what's happening in this community is very important to me. I have two children that I've raised here in Wichita. I'm a lifelong resident of Wichita. I've got four stepchildren, nine grandchildren, that all reside here. So, quality of life is very important. And that's why I'm here to, to discuss this with you. I'm here today to ask you for continued funding for the CANCELL Juvenile Crime Prevention Grant that we have received for seventeen years. This money, eighty-four thousand, five hundred, provides GED classes for Sedgwick County at-risk youth, including some who are on probation or in county residential facilities. The overall rate of recidivism is seventeen percent in Sedgwick County. The recidivism rate for CANCELL students is only two percent. This program works. It keeps kids out of jail, saving the county money, all while helping these youth get high school diplomas so they can get jobs and become productive citizens. When you pass the GED test, you earn a Kansas High School diploma equivalent, which leads to better employment, higher education. In fact, a person earns twenty-eight percent more with a diploma than without any high school credentials. There are very few options in the county for continuing to pass the GED exams. Dozens of the Sedgwick County Probation Officers, the Sedgwick County Youth Program, the USD two-five-nine Guidance Counselors, and nonprofit partners like the Salvation Army regularly refer at-risk youth to enroll at CANCELL. Our program is unique and effective. It includes classroom time with experienced, empathetic, tough teachers in addition to an online learning program. If CANCELL loses funding from the county, this adult education program serving Sedgwick County's at-risk youth will be in jeopardy. As a Sedgwick County voter and CANCELL Board Member, I'm asking you to reinstate CANCELL's funding in the 2016 proposed budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And just for the record and for everybody out there to know, the staff and former manager Bill Buchanan recommended that the funding for CANCELL be eliminated because they have not met their performance objectives in the past. Every organization that we give money to, we ask them to have certain performance objectives and we reevaluate them on a yearly basis for their effectiveness. And certainly we don't, we want our dollars to go to programs that, that meet those objectives. And we also had a study from Wichita State that evaluated all of these crime prevention programs and they were ranked at the bottom with another, another organization. And so those have been proposed to be eliminated. That being said, we've met with representatives from CANCELL and asked them to respond to the information we've given to, that has been given to us by staff, and which they have. And I appreciate that input. So we'll take all that together and consider everything that's said and, and make it our decision at a future date. But I just want to get that on the record for, so that everyone would understand the basis of the recommendation.
Commissioner Peter John?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a lot of your comments and also a news report I saw recently that talked about how graduations rates had gone down. I'd like to give either Mr. Cook or Ms. Gregory the opportunity to respond to the comments that were just provided in terms of effectiveness on the program and changes in that regard if they, if they'd like to do so.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Linda Eves and I live at thirty-three eighty-two North Wild Rose Court here in Wichita. You addressed the concern that we had not met our outcomes. Let me explain to you a little bit about what happened in 2014. In 2014, the GED test changed to align with the core curriculum. It is now a four-part test nationwide. There was an eighty-nine percent drop, an eighty-nine percent drop in the number of people nationwide who took the GED test. In fact, people weren't even going to learning centers. We, our staff at CANCELL did some research and we determined that, we talked to other GED programs throughout the state, many programs who are affiliated with universities in our state, were looking at closing because people were not coming to take the GED test. They had heard it was so difficult now as it aligned with the core curriculum. This is one of the reasons why our numbers were lower, because students weren't able to pass. We were in the process in 2014 when we realized the ramifications of the change in the test, that we had to change our teaching style and how we presented the information. We do teach the test. We do everything we can. We try to understand exactly what is on the test so that the students will be fully prepared and will know how to do advanced algebra, trigonometry, a three-hundred-word, multi-three-hundred-word grammatically correct essays on science, social studies, and language arts. So we had to readjust how we presented the information. That took some time. This is one of the reasons in 2014, again, our numbers were low and unfortunately we didn't see the outcomes that we wanted. That was frustrating to us as well. Please trust me. And we are turning that around now and we're very proud of that. And I think that continued funding will prove that we will, you will see much better numbers. But I also ask you to please remember the audience we're dealing with. These are at-risk youth. These are youth that, they're not used to finishing things. You know, when you guys start a project around the house with your child, you finish it. Sometimes these kids, they just don't finish what they start. They've not had the leadership in their life for whatever reason, whatever barriers are in their life. So oftentimes they come to us because a probation officer instructs them to come to us. And then when they're off probation, they're gone. We don't know where they go. But coming to CANCELL, as I've said jokingly several times, is not like eating a bowl of ice cream. This is tough stuff to do. This is having to go back and learn and accomplishing a big deal. And that's passing four batteries of the GED exam. Please also note that over forty percent of our graduating students could not pass the GED today. Are there any other questions?
I think Commissioner Howell may have some questions or comments.
Yeah. Thank you for being here again today. So, thank you for your testimony and for your explanation. We, we did meet on CANCELL and I actually had a good meeting with you all. We had a good exchange of information. I had a couple of questions. I think you asked them from me. I would like to ask you, I guess, a new question. And that is, I did go on your website and I'm, I'm trying to find in your purpose statement or your, in your, about, you know, it's about CANCELL statement. It doesn't mention anything about juvenile offenders or troubled youth. It just talks about adults. Let me actually read it. It says, "Prepare students for the GED exam. We provide instruction in reading, math, writing. When a student successfully passes the GED exam, he or she is awarded Kansas High School diploma." It doesn't mention anything about a certain population. Can you, so are some of the people who are, who are using CANCELL, are they all juvenile offenders or adult offenders? Do they have criminal histories?
No, sir. We have around two-hundred and, we have two-hundred students that fall under this grant first thing. No, we have over five-hundred students that come to CANCELL. Our students' age range anywhere from sixteen to, up to eighty. We have a, a gentleman that's in his eighties that's working on his GED right now. The average age of our students is probably in the mid-twenties. So we do have a lot of students that are in the sixteen to eighteen range. No, they are not juvenile offenders. They're people who are working-class folks who are trying to get a better job. So this is just a portion. This is a segment of who we serve. When a student is no longer in school, they are classified to us as an adult learner. At age sixteen, if you're not in a traditional school setting, to us, you're an adult learner.
I don't have the other paper in front of me, but this is in a, in a class of trying to reduce, a crime prevention class for Sedgwick County. That's why we have funded this in the past. Is that correct? It's in a crime prevention class.
It is, it is the component for students who are at risk, who, some of them have been involved in criminal activity, for them to come. And we are the education component for the probation officers, ISOs, caseworkers, that kind of thing. So we are there to help them get on track, to stay focused with their life. The probation officer may have other activities for them to do as well, but our component is education.
One of your staff asked me about, I made, I made the comment that there are other GED completion programs throughout the Wichita area and they were surprised by my comment.
Yes.
And they asked me to, to elaborate on that. So I have that information for you now. I'd like to read that to you. I do know that Youth for Christ has a program. They have what's called Phase One and Phase Two. I actually visited that program. Goodwill also has a program and I have visited that program as well. But, but then, on the Kansas Department of Education website, they've got the state broken out into a number of, of regions. And in Wichita region, there is a number of these. I'd like to read these to you and, and I'll ask you a question at the end of this. The Diploma Completion Center Virtual Schools and Programs. I'm sorry, this side, yeah. There's, take that back. There's the Hayesville Learning Cafe, which is in Hayesville, Project Encore, which is in Andover, El Dorado, and Rose Hill, the Learning Connection, which is in Mulvaney and Clearwater, two-five-nine Learning Centers, which is in the Dunbar Building, Town East and Town West Centers, Valley Center Learning Center, which is in, of course, in Valley Center, the Wichita Learning Connection, which is in Wichita. There's a Derby, Derby Public Virtual, which accepts out-of-district students and the, it's based in Derby. The Goddard Virtual Program, which is based in Goddard. They, they only take in-district students. But the Learning Two E-School of Wichita is in Wichita. Mays Online, Mays Virtual Preparatory, the Learning Center at Valley Center. Wichita Area Technical College has a program and the Wichita Indo-Chinese Center Incorporated has a program. That's a lot of programs and a lot of different locations. I guess I'm wondering is why, and I'm not sure if any of them receives, you know, other subsidies. I think two-five-nine receives state subsidies, of course, but I'm not sure about the other ones at all. I'm just curious. Why, why do we need another program in Wichita? We have a lot of programs already out there and many of them are fully funded from the State Board of Education.
You're talking about two different animals, Mr. Howell. A lot of the programs you just listed off, the Indo-Chinese Center helps work people to the GED. They specifically help students here in the ESOL program. So it's a branch off of their ESOL because many of their students who are internationals are working towards getting their GED too. Their credentials from their country do not qualify here. The Youth for Christ program, that is, that is specifically, as I understand it, is for their students that they minister to and they have in their program. It's, I don't know that it's an open door and perhaps they would correct me. I don't know if it's an open-door program to where someone, if they were thirty-five, forty years old who were wanting to secure their GED, could do that. Goodwill is, yes, very similar to us. We do have some differences, but they are also state-funded and they are, and when you list Goodwill, Goodwill and WATC are one and the same. They are a partner program. Okay? So... So those are the GED programs. The other programs you listed are credit completion programs. What I mean by that, if you were out of school, and you were, and you came out of school in 10th grade, and you only had four credits, you've got a lot more work to do. And if you'll notice in the notes that we sent you, Ms. Fish from the Department of, the Board of Education at the State of Kansas, she said that if a student is, has a few credits that, has only a few credits to his or her name, they need to be in a GED program because they'll be 40 years old before they get out of a credit completion program. Many students need one-on-one attention, they need tutoring, they need a different environment than their traditional classroom. But again, please understand that when you list all those programs off, you're listing programs that are credit completion, not GED-based. And the Encore program you spoke of, we're partners with them as well. We work with them a lot. Oftentimes, we have students, they just have a few credits, one or two, three credits, maybe to complete. They do need to go on to the Encore program. That would be ideal for them. So please understand that you need to compare apples to apples.
So are you telling me that the program that 259 offers does not end with the high school diploma? Because I know that they have graduation every year. I've actually visited the program, and they do, they do help adults throughout our community with that.
It is a credit completion program. That means those students work on one credit at a time. They work on their social studies credit, they work on their English credit. They don't take the full GED battery of test. It's a different pathway you take to get to the end result of a high school diploma. That fits for some students, some students it's not. It depends on where you are academically and what you kind of have in your coffers when you left school as a student.
Okay, well, that makes sense. Well, thank you for your answers. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Howell.
Next, we have Lyndon Wells. Oh, wait, Mr. Norton has...
I'm not going to speak just to the micro of Kansas Health. I'd like to speak to the macro. As we've done studies and we understand how many people in our community have not completed high school, and then you step up to how many people got high school but took a little college and didn't complete, the talent in our community that's being wasted is an abomination. And we all know that education not only makes us more socially conscious, but it makes us more, have a better ability to secure a financial future and a job. So in general, I'm very supportive of more capacity in our community, not only in our schools, but with outside agencies that deal with all the different populations, for whatever reason, didn't finish high school. Because one size, one program does not fit all. In fact, it's almost customized for every individual child, young adult, or older adult, of the pathway they got to not have education. And we can see that in higher education, but also degree completion and GED. So at a macro look, I don't think that there is enough capacity in our community to complete the system that makes us a very well-educated community. And let me tell you, if you look at the college rates, the high school rates, and compare them to some other flourishing communities around the state and in the nation, sometimes we lag, and that's not good for our community on so many levels. And that doesn't speak just to Kansas Health, but that's the whole system that we, I believe as a commission, have to be part of. We don't have to fund the whole thing, but we need to be a part of the system to make our community better.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Renzow, thank you, and thanks, Board of County Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lyndon Wells. I live at 8927 East Windwood Court in Wichita. I have the privilege of serving as current Chair of the Sedgwick County Technical Education and Training Authority, which serves as the governing board for the Wichita Area Technical College. So I'm here today representing the interests of the Wichita Area Technical College. First of all, let me say, to follow up on Commissioner Norton, thank you for your leadership in technical education and the advancement of that over the last 10 or 12 years in our community. With the Board of County Commissioners' action to build and to incur the debt and to build the National Center for Aviation Training that the Wichita Area Technical College is privileged to serve as managing partner for, we are honored to be able to do that, and we understand that part of the program that requires funding is the maintenance and upkeep of that facility in the manner in which you expect it to be maintained, and we take that very seriously. But we do appreciate the opportunity to work in that, in that facility. We also appreciate the annual funding that Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners has provided for a number of years, that began when this converted from the USD 259 Management Oversight to the Board of Regents, to a Board of Regents School. So we're grateful for that. For the first few years of that reorganization, there was, there were fits and starts. There was a challenge in trying to get the school up and running with the help of aviation and leadership in the industry that is supported by the students that come out of WATC. A lot of effort has been undertaken, and over the last five years, the school has seen a 22% increase in credit hours sold to students in all of the degree completion and certificate programs that are presented, that are provided. We've gone from 55,000 credit hours to over, to nearly 67,000 credit hours, and that's happened only in the last five years. We've also become a technical hub for high school students in Sedgwick County and in the region. With the help of Senate Bill 55, Senate Bill 155, which was created several years ago, high school students can pursue certificates of completion and credits while in high school in a technical education tract that can prepare them for further education as they graduate from high school. And the success of that program at Wichita Area Technical College has been, has been critical to the ongoing financial success of the school. However, that's a program much like many of the program. Wichita Area Technical College does not have taxing authority, nor do we have the ability to incur debt, so it's important that we seek our funding on an annual basis from resources that are, that are available at the, at the state and national level. I'd also like to remind you that 28 of the 106 programs represent aviation. We have 78 programs that include things like healthcare, manufacturing, which includes heating, ventilation, and air conditioning training, carpentry, auto, construction trades, and so on, business, technical, and police, and design. We, we partner with Wichita State and Shocker Pathways to provide affordable education for students to get into advanced education that hopefully will raise the tide for all the boats in our county. Thank you for your support.
I think Commissioner Peter John has a question.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service on that, on the WATC board, if I can kind of abbreviate it, as opposed to the much longer name you provided. You've been on the board for quite a while, haven't you?
I have.
Number of years?
I would say 10 or 11 years. I don't recall exactly when, about 2004 is when I first became associated.
Okay, because this proposed budget has an impact of, would impact WATC's budget by $100,000?
That is correct.
And your overall budget's about a little over $30 million?
No, sir. Our revenue projections for this year, including all revenue sources, are, is $24 million.
So, $24 million. Let me, last year, and I think back in 2013, there were some reductions that the County Commission had in WATC funding too, I believe.
That's correct.
And I think they were somewhere in roughly about the same range, somewhere between, I think, 50 to 150,000, somewhere in there?
Something less than $100,000. Five or six years ago, the county funding was $1 million. So today, I believe it's $830,000 a year that the county has provided, and as I say, we are very appreciative of that. Of the $24 million in proposed revenue, roughly 60 to 65% of that is represented by payroll, which is our largest single expense, because you can't provide education without faculty and staff to be able to impart the training and knowledge to the students. So clearly, as with any education enterprise, staff and payroll is the largest single expense.
But, okay, so I understand clearly, because you alluded to, but my thinking is Sedgwick County is paying about, oh, between 3.2, 3.3 million a year in principal and interest for the buildings up on North Wild Rose, for the long-term mortgage that's in place, and I don't think that's included with the $24 million, is it?
That is not. As I mentioned in my early comments, that building is a county building. It is, it was built by the county, and we are a tenant in the building. We have, we have maintenance responsibilities and management of the property responsibilities, along with our other sites, including that at East High School and that at the Southside Campus. So, but, but the Wichita Area Technical College is the managing partner of the National Center for Aviation Training, in which they are also leases space.
Appreciate the information. Thank you for taking my questions.
Certainly. Next, we have Sheri Utash.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. My name's Sheri Utash, and I live at 842 North Bristol Court here in Wichita, and I am the president of Wichita Area Technical College. And I too want to certainly offer my most sincere thanks for the vision that the county has had and continues to have in the support that they have for the mission for career and technical education for Wichita, Kansas, and the surrounding areas. We have just finished our 50th year as maybe a technical school, moving into a technical college, but I would say that with the County Commission's assistance and the taxpayers of Sedgwick County's assistance, we have really reinvented Wichita Area Technical College in the last eight years. It is a technical college that is totally different than it ever could have dreamed of being, and it is nationally recognized across the United States, and it is certainly the fastest-growing, two-year technical college in the state of Kansas. So for that, we're very proud and we're very thankful for what we do. We believe we're an educational and an economic driver for this community in areas of aviation, manufacturing, design, healthcare, and certainly in transferable general education to provide students of this community the opportunity to take those first two years of a baccalaureate degree at a much reduced rate. So we're pleased with that. I think another thing is really important. You heard that our enrollment has really grown over the last five, six years, and here's really a big, important piece. Our placement rate of our graduates is 95%. So 95% of those people are either continuing their education, they're either in, joining the military, or they're going straight to the workforce. 95%. That's very high. It's a very good metric. Many of you on the stage as commissioners up here today have been on the stage with me during commencement, and you have seen and witnessed the faces of the students that walk across and receive their diplomas, and you've heard their families cheer for their accomplishments. You know, we always say, "Hope has a face," and the face, the face of hope is the students that we have. So we would really ask for your continued support on the mission that we have to help provide students and this community a chance at a better life and to provide a skilled workforce for our business and industry. Thank you.
Mr. Peter John has some questions.
Sheri, President Utash, a quick question of the programs you've got. We've had some discussion about GED programs. I believe WATC has one. Would you take a minute and describe how that works?
Sure.
And how, how many students go through it?
We had a standalone program at the technical college until about four years ago, and we actually partnered with Goodwill at that point, and we've created what we call Next Step Alliance. And Next Step Alliance is, is, the services there are to provide GED and ESOL, you know, training and education for the community. That particular program has a state grant and a federal grant, and the rest of the dollars, actually, that create the flow of money for that account comes from the retail stores of Goodwill. And we are currently serving about 300 students a year, and I would absolutely agree with the director from Kansas Health, the new GED test has, you know, created some issues, and I think that that's being recognized at both the state and a national level, and will probably be addressed. But we have two different programs. We have a very structured program that they come for half a day, and then we also have a program that is more self-directed competency-based. But here's another thing that we've been doing, I think is so important, is we have, we had the opportunity to have a federal grant called Accelerating Opportunities for Kansas. And so what we did with that grant was we built the opportunity for our GED students to go in the morning to their GED classes or in the afternoon, and the opposite half of the day, we're providing a bridge from WATC of post-secondary classes that they can take. So for instance, they might be taking 15 credit hours in healthcare to get them ready for nursing, or 15 hours of basic concept classes for aviation or manufacturing careers. So it's starting them on a path, so that's the, that's the latest thing that we're doing there, and we're having very good results and very good transferability of those students into full-time programs at WATC once they complete their GED.
Thank you.
Sheri, I have some questions as well.
Okay.
I just want to clarify, because the information was given that I wasn't aware of. So we're looking at reducing funding by $100,000. The overall expenses from that is about $24 million. Is that correct?
Our general fund is actually $19 million, 24 is with all of our auxiliary.
With everything.
Mm-hmm.
But my calculation, that equals out to approximately 0.42%. Would you disagree with that?
I'm going to have to refer...
I calculated it out, $100,000 out of $24 million means a reduction of 0.42%. And for the record, we want to make sure we understand that total taxpayer support of WATC is about 4, what is it, $4.2 million. We have $3.4 million for principal and interest and about $800,000, just an operational subsidy.
Right.
$4.2 million. So $100,000 is approximately a reduction of 2.4% of taxpayer support from Sedgwick County, but overall, it affects your budget by 0.42%.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And, and just to reiterate, the county owns the building, and we have the honor to manage that building and to operate it and to keep the facilities up to date, and certainly as those warranties are coming off, which they all have come off that building now, our maintenance costs are going to continue to, you know, to exceed what we have done in the past.
Certainly. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious, do your students in the GED program, do they take advantage of Senate Bill 155 while they're there?
The Senate Bill 155 can, does not apply to them, but the Accelerating Opportunities program I was just speaking to you about, that has the same funding stream as Senate Bill 155. So those students that are involved in that bridge program between GED and post-secondary, while they're still getting their GED, their tuition is funded through that program, should they choose to go to it.
Why are they not qualified for Senate Bill 155?
Because they're not high school students. They are GED students, and it's a, but the, but in Senate Bill, in the Senate Bill 155, you might, you may remember that Natalie Bright and Gail Gatz were in Topeka, you know, really, really working hard to get the Accelerating Opportunity. Once the grant ran out, the Accelerating Opportunity concept funded, just like SB 155, and it has been funded, and we do have our first students that were recipients last year of that, of that funding.
So the students that are doing 259 adult learning, as was described earlier, because they're doing, they're doing credits rather than learning how to take the GED test, would they be qualified for Senate Bill 155?
They have to be actively enrolled in a high school, so right now, we don't have any of those students involved, and I'm not, I believe that they are excluded from that because if they were, if they, if they aren't, I would think that they'd be coming and knocking on our doors, but we have not had that conversation, and I will do that.
Well, I'll just tell you that I did work with Emily Compton with Goodwill, and we did, I actually, actually helped write Senate Bill 155. I was on the Education Committee and helped pass that law, which has been great for our state. We did amend that, I think, year, not this last session, because I wasn't there, but the session before that, we were able to get an amendment on there, I thought, to, to allow people who were in these programs to access technical education training in that program. So Emily actually worked with me and others, and were able to add that amendment on the Senate floor, and I see a senator in our audience... And I see a senator in our audience, maybe she can speak to that later. But I guess, I'm a little surprised, because I remember that legislation. I believe the intent was that people in her program would be qualified. That was the entire point of putting that amendment on. And to the extent that someone has not received a high school diploma, would qualify them regardless of their age. And so I'm a little surprised that people are not taking advantage of that.
They are taking advantage of it, because this Accelerating Opportunity is a team-teaching concept. So you have GED students, and a GED teacher is teaching with a post-secondary student. And they are qualified for the amendment that came through. The Senate Bill 155 is for juniors and seniors that are currently in high school, and they extended it to homeschool students. So there's two different funding streams. But those GED students at Next Step are qualified for the funding, and they are utilizing the funding.
I guess two more questions. Now, you did say the test was changed, and that has caused some issues. Can you tell us, did your students that were able to pass that test, did that see a major dip in 2014?
Yes, it did.
It did. Can you describe approximately how much that went down?
It was probably about a 20% to 25% drop because of the various reasons that the director from Kansel stated. But the test is extremely difficult. And this is not even a statewide issue. It's a national issue. And it is being looked at and addressed on a much higher level of how they may need to make some adjustments to that test.
A future speaker on Kansel, if they want to clarify the numbers, I'd like to hear those. But I saw on the news last night, this said 43 in 2013 and 8 in 2014. I'm not sure those are the right numbers. I'm just saying that's what I saw on the news. And so it's a major drop. It's more than 25% or 30%. And then she also made a comment that she teaches the test. I'm a little surprised by that comment, but would you classify your program as teaching the test?
I probably wouldn't use those words, no. I think that what we try to do is certainly give those students an opportunity. And we are trying very hard to, I guess I would say, probably contextualize the education for them. I'd probably use those words instead. But we're trying to be very innovative in the way that we're teaching it and innovative in the way that we're doing the testing. Now, you also probably should, you may realize this, but the state did provide some funding for those that take the GED test. So right now, what our position is, is that we front-load the GED test fees for our students at Next Step. And should they complete that test, then they are reimbursed those funds, which we get from the state. It's part of some new legislation through the GED accelerator legislation that was passed about a year ago.
I really do thank you for coming today. Sheri, you've been a pleasure to get to know and to work with on this issue. So I appreciate your comments today.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Renru.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Sheri, I don't have really a question. I just want to express my appreciation for the tremendous asset benefit that WATC brings to our community. I'm proud of the decision that the commission made a few years ago to build that facility. And I'm proud of the record that you've established in not only helping individuals get training for a job or for further education, but as you've referenced, they can actually fulfill their hope, fulfill their dreams. But another element of your value in the community is that this is what our aviation manufacturing industry asked for. They ask us to provide this sort of support so that they would not only have the resources that they need in terms of manpower, but so that there'd be an incentive for these people to continue to stay here and grow in our community. So this has impact and ramifications way beyond just what happens at the school, not only in manufacturing, but in the health industry that you serve and IT industry and in the partnerships with WSU, NIR, and their research capabilities. So this has been a huge asset. And the college has, although it went through a certain period of real struggling to find their identity and how they were going to serve the community, it's been extremely successful, and I think it deserves our support. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Norden.
Don't run off, Sheri. I happen to be involved with WATC in this whole conversation in the dark days when WATC was about to pull tense and we wouldn't have a technical education presence in our community. I'm proud that the county stepped up. I'm proud that we built NCAT. And today, it's a much richer, fuller organization that serves our community. I did have a question, though. For Senate Bill 155, they attached $1,000 per student to that. How much are they reimbursing this year for that program?
So they attached $1,000 to the high schools for each student that received a certification that would lead to a high-wage, high-tech job or high-demand job, I guess I should say. And they've reduced that to $750,000. But the entire pot of money was not utilized last year. So I think the $750,000, we're not really hearing much from the high schools in obstinacy of that. But we do have an incredibly strong high school program that we've built just in the last three years, serving over 2,000 students in this community and working with parents and principals and superintendents across 14 schools.
Thanks, Sheri.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
I just wanted to add, I guess, one more point, I guess, to ponder here. And that is, I did recalculate, just to make sure, it is a 0.4165% cut to your total budget, should this proposal on our budget this year go through as planned. I don't know if that's what we'll end up with or not. That's something we'll have to consider, if any changes might be made. But nevertheless, it's 0.165% cut to your total budget. Can you confirm today that in the 2015 budget, what was passed last year before I was here, the adopted budget, in fact, was $150 million, I'm sorry, $150,000 cut last year. Is that correct? It was a $150,000 cut last year?
It was $100,000.
Well, it ended up $100,000. It restored $50,000.
Right. That's correct.
If you dropped the budget with a $150,000 cut.
That is correct.
This point last year, what they were debating included a $150,000 cut last year.
And then they restored $50,000.
And they restored $25,000. They restored another $25,000, or maybe it was $50,000 at one time. I'm not sure. I think it was $50,000 in January.
I think it was $50,000 in January.
So January the 5th, they restored $50,000. And so, but this time last year, trying to work through the budget, we, in fact, had proposed and start with a $150,000 cut. I just want to make sure that I understand that.
That is correct.
Okay. Again, I do thank you for your comments and appreciate your being here today.
Thank you all very much.
Next, we have Suzanne Scott.
Good morning, commissioners. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Suzanne Scott. My address is 12205 West Nantucket, Wichita. I'm the Director of Global Human Resources at Spirit Aero Systems. And part of my responsibility includes employment, which is hiring. And one of the areas of responsibility in hiring is keeping a robust pipeline, a supply of people, talented, skilled people for our workforce, so that we can hire them. We have attrition. We have a backlog of aircraft. We have increasing production rates. And we have several job openings right now. In fact, you may have heard, about a week ago, we had a job fair at Spirit. We are looking to hire over 500 skilled mechanics. Of that 500, we did make 200 offers last week at the job fair. Unfortunately, about 60% are not skilled aircraft workers. So what that means to us is we're going to have to rely on WATC for technical training of these people we just hired. It's going to be weeks before they can come into Spirit Aero Systems and hit our production lines. We very much, along with the other aviation companies, suppliers, our suppliers, other aviation suppliers in the region, we rely on WATC. They're a critical component to helping us fill our talent pipelines. WATC has multiple programs. We use them in multiple ways to help us build pipeline of people. We invest time, we invest money and talent in WATC in helping them. And we interview every single graduate from their sheet metal training program. As we are struggling to fill our job openings at Spirit right now with qualified workers, we can't afford to have the county working against us. We need an expanded labor pool equipped with technical training for aircraft. We want the work staying in our community instead of going other places that are willing to invest in helping us grow our pipeline of candidates. Instead of discussing about a $100,000 cut, we should really be talking about how to expand WATC's capabilities, make it easier for our new generation of aircraft workers to receive technical certifications and degrees. As the largest private sector employer in this state, Spirit has a tremendous impact on the county's economy. But our ability to be successful requires support and partnership from the county. We are looking for ways to grow our business and have available supply of people. We also are asking that you ensure WATC is fully funded at the 2015 level. And I'll make one more additional comment, please. We are hiring engineers at Spirit Aero Systems as well. And we've brought in almost 200 earlier this year. We are bringing in people from other states into our county. Quality of life, creative opportunities is very important for these engineers, these new, young engineers. So no funding cuts to Sedgwick County Zoo and Exploration Place would help keep our engineers in place, help us retain them at Spirit. Thank you.
We have some questions. Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you for testifying this morning. I appreciate you coming out. And I appreciate hearing the good news that you all are looking to fill some positions out at Spirit Aero Systems.
Thank you.
Can you help me out in terms of, since you're involved in personnel? In 2014, how many people roughly did Spirit hire within the greater Wichita area?
About 1,800.
About 1,800. How many of those would have been graduates of, say, Wichita State?
I don't know the exact number, but of the 1,800, about 1,200 would have been what we call sheet metal assembly mechanics. So a great majority would have come from WATC. But I don't have the exact information. I'm willing to share that.
Well, that was going to be my next question, was I know you're involved in hiring engineers. And counties, we're the only county government in the state of Kansas that provides funding for a region's institution. And obviously, NIR, an affiliation with Wichita State's, absolutely huge. But we're also involved in, I don't know of any other counties that are involved in funding a post-K-12 institution like WATC, the way we have with our paying off the mortgage and also operating support. But I was curious, of the 1,800 positions, if you have any idea how many of WATC people have received certificates or have graduated from WATC were among those 1,800?
Yeah. So once again, I'd probably need to get back with you with that information. But so the people we hire, they go through the sheet metal training programs at WATC. If they're inexperienced, they just have to go through it. And so roughly, I'd have to figure out how many were experienced and how many were inexperienced with aircraft. But a vast majority of our people do go through the program.
Okay. Well, my last question, so I understand that the sheet metal programs specifically that you're talking about, of these 500, approximately 500 openings you have, how many of them are for the sheet metal?
All of them.
Oh, all 500?
All 500.
So these are hourly positions?
Yes. These are hourly production workers, yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate sharing that good news and your input this morning.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions as well. Correct me if I'm wrong, did Spirit previously have a lease with WATC or something that they canceled here within the last year or so? To the tune of about $350,000, I think? It reduced funding to WATC to the tune of $350,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, Spirit was reducing their footprint, yes.
So that reduced, as I said, that reduced the support from Spirit for WATC by $350,000. And I'm going to try to remain calm here, okay, because I'm not happy. You just said that the county is working against you. And that means that you're saying that taxpayers are working against you. Let's be very clear. The taxpayers, first of all, the mill levy was raised in 2006 in part for this facility out there. Okay? And there are a lot of people who do not want the property taxes raised. And we're paying $3.4 million in principal and interest out of property taxes. We're going above and beyond that commitment to the tune of $800,000. Beyond that, Spirit and all the other aircraft companies get property tax abatements from both the city and the county. That means they're being subsidized by the taxpayers. So I'm sorry, but do not come in here and tell me that the taxpayers is working against you. I just read a blurb in the paper today that the profits for Spirit are up. And you say we shouldn't be talking about $100,000 when, well, I say, why are you here talking about a $100,000 proposed cut? When you took $350,000 out, because when you eliminated your lease? If this is all that important to you, then I would encourage you to go back to Spirit and say, maybe you guys could step up and fill in not only that $100,000 void, but maybe the $350,000 void. But don't come in here and say that the taxpayers of this community are not supporting that facility and the aircraft companies. That's insulting. Commissioner Renru?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Scott, I would say that, I want to be on record that the manipulations in business decisions and in county financial decisions are not easily encapsulated in a soundbite. So I don't want to go into all of who said what, when, or whether that two-and-a-half-mill levy we did in 2005, two mills of it's been given back, and how much of it is for alternatives to the Sedgwick County Zoo. And we won't get into all these different arguments. We'd be here for all day. I just want to say that here's one commissioner who wants to say expressly that I am thankful for Spirit's presence in our community. I look at you as a community partner. I appreciate the jobs that you provide for our community and the economic development that you bring to our community. And I would like to end the conversation with those encouraging words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ian Thomason.
Good morning. My name's Ian Thomason. I live at 3629 North Hazelwood Street. And I'd just like to talk a little bit about my experience at Wichita Area Technical College. I started taking classes my senior year of high school. And that's where I earned my sheet medal and my composite technician certificate. And upon my graduation, I received a guaranteed interview from Spirit, and at which point I was hired on soon after. And then, from then, I progressed on to my career to a tooling technician job. And overall, my experience at Wichita Area Technical College, I was around skilled teachers, the same type of tools that I experience in my everyday job. And the transition from my education to the job was very smooth. And I also have many family members and friends that have gone through the program and were able to find good-paying jobs with great benefits. I'd just like to thank you all once again for your past support and giving me the education that I was able to receive. And I hope that the continued support helps the next generation. Thank you.
Commissioner Peter John?
Just a quick question, Mr. Thomason. I'm curious, how many other students were in your class? And how big was the program?
In my...
There were other classes when you graduated?
I know that there was definitely a morning and a night class. And, I mean, definitely as many as I could get going. But I know in my specific classes, maybe 20, maybe 25 portion was in-class, and then a portion was hands-on with tools, and that was about the same level of people.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Ian. Next, we have Janet Hamas. Sorry if I got that wrong.
Good morning. My name is Janet Hamas, and I live...
My name is Janet Hamus, and I live at 2615 Wilderness Court in Wichita. And I am the Executive Director of the Wichita Business Coalition on Healthcare. And we are a group of between 50 and 60 county employers. We are a nonprofit group, and we have worked traditionally very closely with the Health Department because we believe that a public-private partnership is the way to move healthcare forward. And I am here today to ask you to reconsider the cuts that are proposed related to the health assessment and planning that is, has been a critical aspect of the work of the Health Department. The Community Health Improvement Plan, this is what that document looks like, really serves as a bible for those of us that work in health-related organizations because it provides a basis of the data collection, assessment, the setting of the health priorities, and then also the measurement that provides the underpinning for the work that many of us do in other organizations to improve health, to improve healthcare, and ultimately, our goal is to reduce the costs of healthcare for our community. Our ability to make a difference in health and to secure grants outside funding that comes from, you know, other organizations, both on a state and a national basis, is really contingent on having that data collection, that planning, and the measurement in place. And the best place to do that is with the global perspective of the Health Department. So, I'm here just to ask you to reconsider that cut and let us continue to work together as a community in improving health and reducing costs. Thank you.
Janet, I have a question for you. Appreciate your comments, and you said something about, you know, it's important to have a public-private partnership program to address health issues. The problem that I have trying to reconcile, I mean, you have that viewpoint, but I've heard from a lot of physicians that believe just the opposite. In fact, earlier this week, I was talking to a family practice physician, and he said, hey, I want to let you know that these reductions that you're making are a good idea because you're just wasting taxpayer dollars. That there really isn't a government solution to individual health problems, and that people have the mistaken idea that the, that the government can solve our health problems. And this was a physician who works in our community and cares about people, was taking care of people, and he has completely the different opposite view of you do, and others, I understand that. So, how do I reconcile, reconcile those completely different views of people in the Healthcare Department, try to figure out, you know, what the right way is to go, so to speak?
And I don't think I'm suggesting that we want more government in healthcare. We want the private industry to be able to step up to the plate on, on health issues. And, you know, there's a great deal that employers can do in ensuring the health of their employees and family members that isn't government-related at all. For example, one of the, we've been able to receive a couple of grants related to diabetes and have worked with area employers in making changes to health plans, you know, that are fully funded by those employers, and, you know, pursue it that way, totally aside from, from the government aspect. Where we need the assistance of the Health Department is in using its global perspective and its ability to gather data on a, on a more global basis than any one of our individual organizations would be able to do.
Okay. Thank you for your time, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Kelsey Witherspoon.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kelsey Witherspoon. I'm a K U medical student, actually, and there are several of us who will be speaking today. My address is 207 South Belmont Street. So, I am a K U educated student, I'm a fourth-year medical student that attends the Wichita campus here in town. I'm also a third-generation shocker, and I went to Goddard High School. So, I am native, I'm local, and I'm happy to be here. Today, I'm actually representing those Kansas University Medical students who are interested in staying here and practicing and serving the local Kansas patient population we have here today. A large majority of the K U medical population students right now actually are from Kansas, and they might leave for college, but they actually return to go ahead and pursue their medical educations here. There are a lot of reasons for that. A lot of that has to do with the fact that there are family members here, the quality of education we receive at K U is excellent, and there are a lot of clinical opportunities and opportunities to work with the underserved, underprivileged, and uninsured here locally in Wichita. Today, I know that many of you are familiar with the fact that there is a lack of patient providers here in the state of Kansas. There's a significant physician shortage. And that's pretty important to us because we are very passionate about staying here locally to make sure that those patient populations are served. One of the things that's going to be very important for us in the next coming years as we graduate and return from residencies is to make sure that Sedgwick County is a place that we want to come back and practice in. And making sure that the public health initiatives that we're talking about today, the mental health initiatives, and even the arts communities are places that don't face maybe some of the budget cuts that you all are proposing. There's nothing more frustrating than not being able to provide the level of care that we're interested in providing our patients. And then, we're just mostly interested in making sure that anything that happens, we want to be fiscally responsible, but also make sure that, that we keep Kansas physicians in Kansas and make sure that they have access to the resources they need for their patients. I'd also like to point out the fact that we have two of our student clinic directors here today, Christina and Claire, and we have two additional medical students that are in the overflow room. So, thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Peter John has a question?
Question. You'd mentioned that there's a doctor shortage of sorts. I've heard that it varies depending, depending on certain specialties are much more prone to that than others. Is that true?
Sure. As far as I know, correct, yes. We are, K U has a distinct emphasis on making sure that primary care physicians are trained specifically. That's the program emphasis, and that's something that we're all looking to go into is general practice, all three of us. So...
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Kelsey, for your comments, and I can assure you that there's nothing in this budget that will prevent you from providing the quality care that I know you want to provide in the future, and I, and I thank you for your efforts.
Next, we have Christina Zaborn.
Yeah, like the born identity. Hi, my name is Christina Born. I am also a fourth-year medical student at the University of Kansas. My address is 250 West Douglas, Wichita, Kansas, 67202. I am here to specifically discuss the cuts that are towards the county Health Department, Project Access, and our greater public health infrastructure. First of all, happy birthday, and I also wanted to applaud you all for really trying to be fiscally responsible and address our budget. This is something that we all do, and I know it's something that we all struggle with. How I personally manage my budget is I try and think of myself in the future. And where do I want to be, and how do I want to be living in the next 10 years? I know that I want to be healthy, active, and serving my community as a physician and as an advocate. Because I have this goal for myself, I shift more of my personal budget to match my health goals, meaning that I invest my personal money in, to prevent disease in the future. This is exactly what I'm proposing to the Commissioners. We as a community do not want our citizens to become victims of chronic health diseases like diabetes and heart disease. And specifically to those in our community that already have these conditions, it should be our aim to prevent the comorbidities and catastrophic health outcomes that come of these, like stroke, amputation, and heart attack. What I'm asking the Commissioners to envision is how do you want your community to look in 10 years? Chronic diseases are no joke, and the further they advance, they exponentially cost the individual, county, city, state, and nation more money. I understand that public health is difficult to conceptualize at first, which is why it makes it such an easy target for budget cuts. These chronic diseases are nearly all preventable, and with a strong public, public health infrastructure, we can continue working to keep our community healthy. Physicians, and future physicians like myself, have an ethical and professional responsibility to act in the interest of our patients at all times. I cannot be a quality physician without a strong public health infrastructure supporting me. This is why I urge you to reconsider the budget cuts directed at Project Access, the rest, the rest of the county Health Department, and our public health infrastructure as it exists today. And this being a budget hearing, to put it into dollars and cents, every dollar we spend on prevention saves $5.60 on future health expenditures. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't, I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Great.
Next, we have Claire Thomas.
Hi, good morning. My name's Claire Thomas. I'm also a fourth-year medical student, and last of the three of us up here. My address is also 250 West Douglas, and that's in Wichita, Kansas, 67202. And I'll be echoing a lot of the things that have been said before, but my medical student colleagues and I are here today because we are concerned that the cuts to Project Access and the County Health Department will compromise our ability to provide the quality care that we want to provide to our patients in the future when we serve the Sedgwick County Even as medical students already, we've seen countless patients benefit from this program, referred patients. There's seen patients that have benefited from the specialty referrals and referrals to healthcare and the services that the Health Department offers. So, we, we, we have tangible proof of what these services means to our patients, and that's why it was kind of alarming to, to read about the proposed cuts. Health is so important, and I know I'll be making points that have been made before and we made again, but poor health means missed work, it means lost jobs, it means disability, poorer quality of life, it leads to more ambulance rides, E R visits, longer hospital stays, which we've all seen in our, our clinical experiences. Cutting mental health services leads to more and longer jail stays. It means to more use of state hospital beds, which is a resource we're already struggling with. As Kelsey was saying, many of our colleagues, many of our student physicians plan to stay in Sedgwick County, and the dream of service through building practices and hospitals and providing excellent care to our community. And this excellent care requires services like Project Access and the services offered by the Health Department to serve our most vulnerable patients. And we're glad that Sedgwick County has been such a great partner in us providing care to our community, and we look forward to working with you in the future. So, thank you so much for letting us speak today and letting us be a part of this conversation.
Sure. Commissioner Norton has, has a question?
Yeah.
Well, Kelsey, Christina, and Claire, thank you very much for being here today.
Yeah, thanks for listening.
It's encouraging to have young millennials, smart, intelligent, young people come and testify to County Commission on something that's so important. You know, if you don't have your health, there's a lot of other things that don't matter in your life. And I applaud you for the hard work you've put into your education and to your service because you're going to be serving a lot of people for the rest of your life. I, I know that when you do your clinical, sometimes you serve at Grace Med, you serve in clinics. Have you worked with the population as you're starting to do your clinicals and everything?
Yeah, actually, all of us are pretty regular volunteers at the Guadalupe Clinic as part of the J Doc Community Clinic. And so, that's, that's how we got to know Project Access pretty well and where we've used it primarily. So, we're pretty well familiar with the patient population it serves.
So, you come to this with experiential knowledge of Project Access
Mm-hmm.
And what it does for your mission to be servants of people in their healthcare needs. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I think we can all see our patients in our heads who have benefited from the service, so it's, it's really important to us. Yeah.
Thank you, and Project, I've been a big supporter of Project Access for many, many years. It is a platform that allows you, number one, to be trained in an experiential atmosphere, but also to save people's lives, make their lives better, and to help the reduction of healthcare costs in our community. Thank you very much for being here, and for the two young ladies that are sitting in the other room. We thank them for coming.
Especially Nate Davis and Leah Speaks are sitting in the other room.
Okay, so it's one young lady.
Yes.
Sorry, Nick, wherever you are. Thank you for being here today. You're the face of our future. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Edward Wills.
My name is Edward Wills, and I live at 925 West 29th Street South, apartment 120 at the Eagle Trace Apartment Complex. I'm here on the behalf of Kenzo. I am a student there currently. I'm 17 years old. You might ask, why am I not in public schooling at one of the high schools around here? Reason being for that is because public schooling was not a very good, how do you say it? Socialization for me. It's not a very good standing for me. There's peer pressure, there's students that, peer pressure you do the wrong things, that peer pressure you to go down the wrong path. With Kenzo, I have found that the staff there and the students that also go there have pushed me to go down the correct path. And I am current, I currently am on probation, which is the reason that I was put in Kenzo. My probation officer had stated that I needed to get a better education than what I was doing at Wichita West High. So, she brought me to Kenzo, and Kenzo, I have found very much success in what I have done at Kenzo. I'm very close to getting my GED as I'm standing right here. I have a month, month and a half in order to get my GED. And on top of that, I plan on going into their construction setting that they have, their construction career, career training that they have. I would, I've done three years of woodworking, and I would love to go into theirs. If you guys cut the budget, you will be cutting second chances for people like me that are on probation, that have done wrong in the community, that have, that are wanting to turn around and get a second chance and better the community, that could go on a career path like I want to go on to. Again, if you cut the budget, you're cutting a second chance for people. And I'm going to stay back to what Linda said, the director. They don't literally teach the test, they teach the material that is on the test. They help the students understand the material in order for them to get the test and to understand it and to pass the test, what is required in order for them to get a better job in the community and to help the community all around. Thank you, that is all I have to say today. Appreciate you guys letting me come up and speak.
Commissioner Norton?
Thank you, Edward. It takes guts to admit that you've made mistakes and step in front of cameras and the crowd and say it, but there's great hope for you, and I wish you all the success in the world. Stay at it and get through that last month and a half.
Thank you, Commissioner Norton.
You're welcome.
I'll just say, I got a text from a friend, and I want to make it very clear with respect to my comments, when Ms. Scott was speaking on behalf of Spirit Aero Systems, my criticism or directed to Spirit as a company, I in no way intended to make it look like I was directing my remarks to Ms. Scott personally. She's here representing Spirit, and, and that's where I have the problem with, and I want to make that very clear. Next, we have Dawn Morse.
My name is Dawn Morse. I live at 8102 East Indianapolis Street in Wichita. And I would like to address the Commission about the funding cut to Kenzo. You've heard a lot about Kenzo this morning. I serve on the Board of Directors, and I brought along with me today the GED Preparation Book. It's a great big book with a lot of scary stuff in it. If you can tackle advanced math, including advanced algebra, upper-level trigonometry, along with writing essays, you have to write three, 300-word essays to pass the GED test. Lots of questions about social studies and science across a total of four tests that take anywhere from an hour and a half to two hours apiece. It's a lot of information that they have to know to pass the GED test. Forty percent of graduating high school seniors today could not pass this test coming out of high school. Most of us in the room could probably not pass this test today. If I gave you the book, you'd be surprised at the information. The test was made much more difficult in 2014, and I have some of the information, Commissioner Howell, that you were looking for earlier. The national pass rate for the exam in 2013 was 540,535. People passed it in 2014. In 2013, there were 58,524. Eighty-nine percent decrease in passes because of the change in the test. The changes in Kenzo's outcomes reflect that same percentage. Many students gave up trying to take the test, and many agencies gave up trying to help them because it was so difficult. But Kenzo responded to the drops by revamping the teaching, the tutoring, and online learning to prepare the students to be able to be successful. But Kanzel responded to the drops by revamping the teaching, the tutoring and online learning to prepare the students to be able to be successful. Students, both the at-risk youth and the motivated adult learners are really now digging into the program and making tremendous gains. And it happens sometimes a test at a time. They study for a test, they take the test, they study for the next one and take the next one, until they get all four completed. Sedgwick County's 2016 proposed budget cut of $84,500 from the Kanzel GED Preparation Program budget that serves these at-risk youth is almost 30% of Kanzel's education budget. The bottom line is that Kanzel will have great difficulty providing GED classes for these youth referred by Sedgwick County and many agencies across the county, along with their other students if the funding is lost. In 2014, 98% of our Kanzel Youth Crime Prevention Program students did not commit a crime. All of them may not have completed the GED, but they didn't recommit a crime. Those are impressive results, so please, please, continue to support Kanzel. In the 2016 county budget, the grant keeps kids learning, keeps them out of trouble, and I think that's what we all want for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. I appreciate your comments. Next, we have Pat Hammerhand.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Pat Hammerhand and president and CEO of United Way of the Plains at 245 North Water. I recognize the difficult task you have in putting together this annual budget and I do thank you for your service. I am here today on behalf of the United Way Board of Directors to ask you to consider alternatives, budget alternatives, that would allow you to restore the critical cuts made to the nonprofit organizations, many that you've heard from already. Throughout this past week or so, in this process, I've heard comments that the private sector can do more or should do more. The private sector is doing a lot, not only financial contributions, but the gifts of volunteers. And that's one of the reasons, I think, that makes it a wise investment of county dollars in nonprofits, because of the use of volunteers to expand those program dollars. Whether it's mentors at Big Brothers and Sisters, seniors working at Catholic charities foster grandparent and giving a lot more than the stipend they get, or the outstanding example at Project Access where doctors and hospitals have donated over $15 million a year to the care of people. And United Way is and remains a proud partner and proud of the fact that we, along with the county and the city, established Project Access in 1999. It has served us well. I've heard suggestions have been made that funders like United Way can fill in the gaps. While I'm here to say as CEO of United Way, that's not possible. We are still reeling from the effects of this recession. Of the $2 million that we've lost since 2007 in the aviation industry alone. And I can also tell you, as the largest nonprofit fundraiser, I think I speak on behalf of the others, this is a very difficult fundraising environment. Even though the economy is starting to improve, it is still difficult. In addition to that $2 million I mentioned, last year we had to downsize further our goal by a half million dollars to make up for the merger of Beach Aircraft. Our community needs new jobs and new industries. Bring in that growth and the nonprofit sector will generate increased funds. We've been looking at what some of those new jobs will look like and we've heard the term today of millennials. Millennials are very different in terms of how they give. They look at quality of life in terms of communities that they represent, where they want to live. That means for Sedgwick County to grow and prosper, millennials will have to, will want quality of life attractions like the zoo and exploration place and the arts, and they will place a great value on nonprofit institutions. The nonprofit sector needs your help. This is not a time for cutting, but a time for investment. Please continue these worthwhile investments in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gary Plummer.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Gary Plummer, the president and CEO of the Wichita Metro Chamber of Commerce and we reside at 350 West Douglas. I'm here on behalf of the chamber today to advocate for stability, to stress the importance of quality of life issues and to highlight the value of community partners, including economic development, education, cultural and recreational groups and health organizations. We appreciate your service as well and the time you dedicate to this budget process. We recognize the need to focus the county on core services. Many of the cuts you're proposing, including the end for funding for affordable airfares in its current form, we support actually. We do however, want to encourage you to consider some sort of a compromise, one that doesn't raise taxes or over utilize debt financing. One step would be to leave the property tax flat, netting you an additional $512,000 on an annual basis. And I understand some members of the commission have already expressed their support for that idea. We're also suggesting you consider either reducing next year's expenditures on roads or continuing to bond for those expenditures, which we think would free up about $2 million for you. Those sort of changes, I think, would put you in the position where you could work with your county partners and give them a chance to better prepare for potential cuts down the road instead of having to make the cuts as quickly as you're considering right now. A compromise, we believe, would demonstrate the value that you folks recognize in community partnerships with many of the nonprofit organizations you work with and would also demonstrate that to your county constituents as well. We believe that compromise would demonstrate the county's continued support on critical quality of life issues like education, cultural and recreational amenities and public health programs, which are important not only to our current workforce, but actually they're critical to attracting talented, young workforce to our area. One of the steps you could take through a compromise would be to restore full funding for the Greater Wichita Economic Development Coalition, which in the last decade has helped create about 15,000 jobs through a partnership with your organization and the city. We think it's a very important public-private partnership. In conclusion, we want to encourage you to consider taking a slower pace on some of the cuts that you're considering. Look at restoring those cuts as you continue to work on the 2016 budget. You know, we recognize that this county commission and a lot of the organizations that are here today have the same goal in mind and that is to make Sedgwick County more attractive. And we think the only way we can succeed in that effort is if we all work together. So we want to thank you for your partnerships in the past and we look forward to a worthwhile solution to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next, we have Anisha Miller.
Hello, my name's Anisha Miller and some of you probably know me. I worked for the county for 26 years and I didn't know anything about Project Access. And anyway, I had a lot of personal problems. One of the things I had done before I left the county was through the years, I had tumors removed from my colon. And the last time, the last year I was with the county, I had one removed from, well, the top of my colon and bottom of my esophagus. Okay, well, I was like fired and my last day was April 10th of 2013. And I had to pay off a lot of bills and stuff. And I wasn't quite ready to retire. I had more years before I could get it out without penalties and stuff. But I had to do what I had to do. And anyway, my income is below $400 a month. And anyway, I tried to get a job and my reason for getting fired was commonly used, you know, and it was my memory is what they were saying. I was told about KU Research and anyway, I got into it. And anyway, I asked them now, if I get on this medication, how am I going to pay for it? Because I didn't qualify for any of the help. You either have to own property less than $2,000 or you have to be of a certain age and I didn't qualify for either. So anyway, they told me about Project Access. And anyway, I got involved in it and anyway, I ended up though having to go through emergency room. Well, that's, anyway, the deal is, is I've been telling other people about this program and they had no idea about it. And I have the information here and like I said, I end up coming across people who were, well, they're in worse ways than me. Anyway, one of them, he had no job because he couldn't work. He got injured in a accident or something. And he was also, he's a diabetic, so he had to have some sort of help. And anyway, his children and his wife were on the street trying to sell food and stuff. Anyway, I told him about Project Access. And I want you to know how helpful it is.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, for being here. Next, we have Nate Davis.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Nate Davis. My office is at 1137 West Minell. Over the years, I've come before you here as well as other groups around town to speak in support of the Judge Riddell Boys Ranch. I've always had strong opinions about their staff, the programming, and most importantly, the kids who are affected by JRBR. Now, those opinions were based on my own life, both as a juvenile offender who lived at the ranch and now as an adult working in this community for the betterment of all of our kids. When I was asked to come speak in 2012, it was because none of the Sedgwick County employees who actually worked at the ranch were allowed to. I thought that was kind of strange that a person who sees what the program does firsthand and can be the best voice to advocate for it would have their mouths covered, so I did start talking. In those talks that year, I got the impression that besides the county manager who made the proposal to close, this commission was in support of the ranch. So was the overwhelming majority of the community at that time. You voted to keep it open and people within the state legislature began working to secure more funding over the coming years. Then time passed and something even stranger happened. People began taking sides and the next time the story was in the media, it was made to look like a party issue. The Republicans were for it and the Democrats seemed to be against it. The ranch wasn't built for conservative kids or liberal kids, black kids, white kids. It was built for every kid in our community who could benefit from it. So the masses responded accordingly. A few false statements were made in the paper and on the news and the more they were repeated, the more people felt inclined to believe them. The claim that the building was falling to pieces around you and you couldn't afford the maintenance, the idea that these Sedgwick County kids were the responsibility of the state and not our community right here. Now, I have an article here written in 1979, taken from the Wichita Eagle Beacon. And this was around the time that the state of Kansas stepped in with additional resources at the request of then Judge Morrison. It was meant to add funding to the ranch, never to replace it. And at that time of that proposal, this commission understood that very well and I don't understand what happened. So skip ahead to 2014. At that point, it didn't matter that the state was giving more money for the ranch than it ever had. It didn't matter that a comprehensive study was done on the ranch by WSU that proved JRBR was the best in the state and rivaled many programs around the country. One person made the decision that the ranch should fall and when he couldn't do it himself, he was somehow able to entice other people to do it for him. Now, I won't imply that I know why that was. Was it because that person was also on the board of the Zoological Society and thought that a new elephant exhibit was more important? Maybe, maybe not. What I do know is that the future of our coming generations is now not as certain as it was three years ago. JRBR was a proven program that implemented best practices in the treatment of our county's juveniles and now it's gone. That's all I get to say.
Thank you, Nate. We have Commissioner Peter John.
Thank you. We've had several folks with challenging backgrounds have come and spoken today. Mr. Davis, appreciate you've spoken to us in the past, but I just wanted to thank you and the other folks who had spoken earlier who, you know, it's often very hard to speak. Number one fear for a lot of folks is public speaking.
Big time.
And, but to get up and basically talk about their probation officer or previous, having been at Judge Riddell's Boys Ranch like you had, I'm not talking about you as probation officer, let me clarify that.
I had those too.
Oh, okay. But, or personal health situations, I just wanted to get that comment there because I know how difficult that can be for folks and I very much appreciate your input this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nate Davis, I just want to say thank you for being here today. You present a very unique perspective that we need to hear. And to the extent that you related something that really is very bothering to me, that is that the staff was not allowed to speak in 2012, was it, or 2013?
They're still not allowed to speak to this day.
We need to fix that. That's not okay. I will do what I can to remedy that problem. That's not okay with me. It is interesting to me that the community widely supported Judge Riddell Boys Ranch. I think everybody across the county understood the value. I rarely met someone who did not value what they provided and the data that packed up the idea that was a very effective program for Sedgwick County and actually saved taxpayer dollars. And then something funny happened. I agree with you. I appreciate you pointing that out. It became political. There should not be a debate between Republicans and Democrats or whether these are state kids or county kids. This is a local problem and we need to be invested in it. And we do, I want the people to know that what's in fiscal 2016 budget is an appropriation for, I think, roughly $500,000 for a continuation of a program that's evolved. And it takes a different, has a different look to it. And I think that today, I'd like to get your comments on whether you think this is good for the community or what. I just want to see what your opinion would be, but I want to make it clear that there would be some people out there that think this is a waste of money. That we should not be spending $500,000 for Sedgwick County youth. And let me just explain quickly what this is. We will have some kids that are retained in their own homes and we'll provide programming from our community experts that would be provided to them in their homes to help get them on the right path. There will be some kids that will be in some of our youth residential facilities, not Judge Riddell Boys Ranch. There are some other YRC twos in our community that don't have enough beds. We have, and we have about 30 kids, since JRBR closed, about 30 kids have been sent out of this county consistently since July 1st of 2014, last year when this commission made a choice to close that ranch down. And as a result, these kids are going to places across the state of Kansas that provide no programming whatsoever. And I, we have no data to know if they're effective or not. We're concerned about that and I think so what we're trying to do with this program is keep kids local, encourage our providers to prioritize Sedgwick County kids and create bed space for them specifically. And we will take programming to them wherever they are, whether it be in their own homes or in one of these other facilities. And that program is estimated to cost about $500,000. There will be people in this community who are going to potentially attack the idea that this is good for our community. I'd like the commissioners, they have shown support. I believe we had a five to zero vote the other day to approve that program going forward. And in fact, it's going to retain the name of James V. Riddell Boys and Girls Alternative Program. And so this is a continuation of what we've tried to do in the past, although it takes a different footprint. It's not going to be, not, won't be a ranch and doesn't include girls and it's for all Sedgwick County youth that are in these programs, whether it be in their own homes or one of these other facilities. And so with all that being said, I want you to, if you would please, present your opinion and whether we should in fact, retain that money, which is going to be, we have limited resources and I know people are saying put that money someplace more important and they'll name a lot of things, but I'd like you to make a case, if you would, for what we should do next year regarding that $500,000.
Yeah, my personal opinion is we're dealing with the ranch being closed right now and it's not a popular way of thinking among the people that feel the way I do. And it's not a popular way of thinking among the people that feel the way I do. But my opinion is the ranch should not be reopened. Um, the ranch should not have ever been closed. But now the, the steps that would have to be taken to reopen it as what it was, I, I don't think that that's a, a logical option. Now, what you're proposing, um, I have a lot of faith in, in Sedgwick County. I've, I've worked with, you know, the juvenile programs all around the county, um, as a participant and as a, uh, you know, as an adult working in this industry now, um, if you can call it an industry. But, um, to answer your question, that faith in them and that faith in what they do, I think that e- even if it starts out as what it is now, which I'm, I'm not happy with, I think that they have the likelihood of bringing it up to something that is, is good. And they can still be better than others around the, around the state. Because Sedgwick County is good at what they do as far as working with their juvenile population and reducing recidivism, which is the goal. Um, my, you know, my opinions are not just my own opinions. I've, you know, you, a couple of you guys know that I, I took it upon myself, uh, last year to start filming a documentary because I was, I was kind of the poster child for this. And it was always the news talking to me and the paper talking to me, but nobody else was, was found and nobody else was able to talk. So I started talking to those people. And we've ended up with several dozen people who have an opinion very similar to mine. So it's not just me alone in the wilderness screaming, save JRBR. You know, this is a lot of people, people in this room and people in the overflow room as well, so.
And I would just say, you know, there were some issues at Judge Riddell Boys Ranch that, that created, I think, pressure on that budget. We actually had more staff at JRBR than we did residents. And that's not a, a sustainable program with that type of a, uh, organization. But to the extent that, um, there are some private sector organizations in our community that may be able to, uh, provide some more bed space by potentially using that site or other sites, um, I guess I'd be interested in hearing those proposals. And I would tell you that the, the, the problems with that facility are overstated. There was a, a time in 2013 where we were debating, you know, what, what, what can we do to, uh, make the ranch, uh, uh, last into the future? And there was numbers of nine or 10 million dollars to fix the problems. And I, and I asked, well, what exactly do you get for nine or 10 million dollars? And they said, you get a brand new building. So that's really not, uh, I think, uh, an accurate assessment of what's going on out there. And then we've heard numbers of, you know, two million or three million or four million dollars to fix the problems in that facility. And again, that's overstated. I visited that facility just two weeks ago. The only thing that has to be done to make it usable is a, is a, uh, a sewer line out to the lagoon that's in that, on that property. And that's around 30 or 40, maybe 50,000 dollars for the entire repair for all those buildings that are out there. Everything else out there is actually functional and is still certified. We have a boiler that has a recent inspection. It's, it's up to date on its inspection. The fire systems, the fire safety systems are all up to date. Uh, the facility is actually a fantastic facility. And if there's a private sector organization that wants to take on some responsibility, a responsibility to provide some bed space, I'd sure like to have them talk to us. But having said that, um, I do appreciate your perspective. I think you bring a very unique, uh, perspective. And you have been a, a champion for this issue of how to help our kids and our community. I appreciate what you've done. And in fact, I would give you a little bit of credit for me being here today. Because in 2013, when you came and spoke to the commission, uh, the legislature was invited. The South Central Legislative Delegation was invited. And I was in that room and I heard the comments made by the Commissioners. Then we had a meeting later on at Lake Afton. Heard the me, I heard the comments made by Commissioners and, and people from the state of Kansas. The Department of Corrections, uh, also made comments. And, uh, there was nobody standing up for Sedgwick County kids. You have done that. And I also want to say thank you. We need solutions in this community. And this is a conservative position to put kids, put money on kids when you can change the direction of their life. I think we have a responsibility to do that. And I want to say thank you for being here and advocating for that spending.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Next, we have Jenny Pennick.
Hello. My name is Jenny Pennick. Uh, my address is 1517 West Browning Court. Um, I am with Thunderbird Firearms Academy and I wanted to speak to our experience with SCAD. Um, we had a small retail store in the Delano area with intentions to grow and build a brand new indoor shooting range and training center. We're a small business and had worked with SCAD for a couple of years packaging our SBA loan application for our new facility. Projects of our size are so big that we never would have gotten the approval without them. They were instrumental through the entire process, assuring our bank that our project would be worthwhile and assisting us and the bank putting together a successful application. Banks do not have the expertise to do this because the SBA does not allow for direct contact, which means we have to, we had to use a packager on projects of this size. We are so thankful for their help. I don't believe we would be where we're at right now without them. Helping small businesses get through the daunting SBA application and finally becoming approved is never a bad thing for a community. I ask that you reconsider funding for SCAD so that other small businesses can get the assistance they need in order to continue to grow in Sedgwick County. And thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
I just want to say thank you, Jenny, for coming out today. I did get to visit your facility last week and I just want to give you a plug. It was awesome.
Thank you.
Um, if the community doesn't know what's going on out there, they need to pay attention to Thunderbird, uh, Academy out there on Greenwich Road, is it?
Yes, sir.
All right. It is just a fantastic facility. I'm really proud of you all for opening that.
Thank you.
And I know that, uh, we're going to hear from Abdul in just a moment, a moment on SCAD. And I'll have some questions for him. But I appreciate the story about how he helped you, uh, make this a reality. So, uh, thank you for coming out today.
Thank you for saying that.
Next, we have Abdul Arif.
Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing me out. Uh, I stand before, I stand before you today based on a, on an assumption that you're men of reason, rationality, and a dedication, a sincere dedication to the Sedgwick County residents such as myself. Um, at SCAD, we share those assumptions with you, but believe that your decision to cut, uh, ties with us will hurt small businesses, the very core of the taxpayer base in Sedgwick County that creates jobs for us. As we sought to explain to you numerous times to this board, we seek to serve the needs of small businesses borrowers who otherwise would not find funding. Uh, you just heard from Jenny here a minute ago. When you visited Thunderbird Tactical, you heard her emphatically emphasize the role of SCAD in a nice new $3 million facility that created jobs. That could not have happened without a packager such as us. As I said before to you on numerous occasions, we do not compete with banks. We are a gap funding organization. Uh, when, uh, I recall, Commissioner Howell, you, the last time, um, at the budget hearing, you had said that this 100% cut of $84,000 to our agency represented 3% of our entire budget. I'm not sure where you got that information from. That, uh, 100% budget, budget cut is substantially higher because then it impedes our ability to, uh, increase our l- loan customer base. Um, also, um, Sedgwick County residents will still receive 100% of our services despite you cutting us 100% of our funding. We only get $83,000 from, from you guys. And all of that money goes to, uh, technical assistance, uh, loan outreach to the smallest of the smallest, smallest businesses that create jobs. Um, also, um, if you would please, uh, understand the impact of the message that you're sending. There's 14 counties in my range, uh, in my reach. And Sedgwick County obviously is the largest one. If you go, guys don't see value in what we do, how will I be able to convince 13 other counties that I serve? Because these are very difficult questions for me to answer when I get undercut by my own county. Uh, despite, uh, in, despite what I read about you gentlemen in the press, I'm convinced that you all will listen to re- uh, reasonable rationality and restore our relationship with my organization. And to me, it's a ministry of sorts to counsel small businesses, make their loans happen and create jobs. And I, when I joined this organization about nine months ago, I took a substantial pay cut because I really truly believe in helping small businesses. And for, without us, they will have no place to go for us to package loans. Thank you, and I'll be happy to take your questions.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, to, let me just rebuttal a little bit, uh, information. Uh, you, you're asking where I got my information. I asked county staff to contact various agencies that are, that were, uh, funding in our 2016 budget and to find out what, um, percentage of, of their total budget is our appropriation. So I can understand how, how important it is. Some, some agencies have, uh, I think WATC is a good example. And we're talking about a 0.41, a 0.41% cut for the total budget of $24 million. I mean, uh, for your budget, when I, when I got the data back from our staff, they told us, they told me that your budget was $2,760,834. Is that correct?
Yes, but there's more to it than that. There's a lot of nuance in there, Commissioner Howell. Uh, 1.9 million of the, of that is weatherization. None of the funds that you give us go to weatherization. Weatherization is passed through money that we get from private sources. Anonymous private donors, we don't take taxpayer money here. Only 850,000 is actual small business budget. And if you take away $84,000, that's more like 10, 10% of our budget. So that's, I, I believe that's where the nuance comes from. I believe we tried to explain that in some of the meetings we've had with you. So the weatherization is completely separate part of it. And when you take that 84,000, it gives you a very skewed view of what our budget is. 84,000 is strictly devoted to the general operating funds to serve the small businesses.
I, uh, I thank you for the clarification. You actually answered my question. I was going to ask you about your, what percentage, uh, percentage of your budget was for weatherization programs? And you've answered that question. And so rather than being a 3% effect on your total budget, we'd be about a 10% effect on that part of your budget.
Absolutely.
Okay, I do understand that now. And I, I thank you for the clarification. And I do thank you for helping, um, the, um, the lady from Thunderbird Academy just a moment ago. She came up and I did visit with her and she talks about a ma- um, application that was about six inches thick, probably.
Absolutely.
Uh, trying to wade through all that. Now, I do have one question that came from my discussion with her. Um, you do charge them a fee, is that correct? What, what was your, what was your percentage or your, can you describe how much money you made on her transaction?
$4,500 is the application fee. Uh, and the SBA also gives us a small percentage of the servicing fee throughout the life of the loan.
All right. Excuse me. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Howell. I appreciate, um, the opportunity to speak to us. I do recall at Wichita State, me, uh, we sat next to each other. You commented to me how much you love SCAD. And I hope, uh, I can persuade you to, uh, continue loving us and restore our budget.
Abdul, I have a question.
Okay.
It's been brought to my attention, I, I know there's multiple counties that participate in. And I've been told that Harvey County had some discussion as whether or not to, to belong to SCAD again. And I think they decided to do so, but they had some concerns about some shoddy work with respect to the weatherization program. Would you like to speak to that?
I certainly will, uh, Commissioner Renzo. Currently, we do not serve weatherization needs of Harvey County. ECAN from Ottawa, Kansas does. We do not do weatherization. I'm trying to persuade them to join us because that decision is made by KHRC. The shoddy work that you're referring to was done by ECAN, not by us, Commissioner Renzo. Matter of fact, I can share the letter with you commen- commending our staff for doing a wonderful job to correct the shoddy work that ECAN had done.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Next, we have Shirley Cohen.
Good morning. My name is Shirley Cohen. Um, I reside here in Wichita at 442 South Waverly. Some of you may already know me. I'm a big campaigner against Common Core. And I certainly agree with the lady from Kinsale who said the testing has become, I would say ridiculously hard. If you want to know about it, go online and look up testing for Common Core and you'll find all kinds of, uh, teachers coming forward in public schools, especially in the, in the state of New York. I just want to throw that in there. Many of the presentations this morning certainly tug at your heart. And they all sound like something that we would be willing to work with. I grew up, uh, with a mother who waited tables, a single parent. I never felt poor until my friends started to go to Harvard and Wellesley and places like that. And I wondered if I was even going to go to college. Long story short, I did. I got a, a bachelor's and a master's, had a little economics and money in banking and et cetera. My husband and I had a business for over 30 years here in town. So we know a little bit about budgets and I know how hard it is. I don't envy your job at all because the taxpayers cannot continue to keep giving more and more money. So it has become to the point, I believe, where we do need to make some cuts. And one of those is probably to work toward a cash basis. And I know that's kind of an unusual thing to bring forward in this day and age when some people live continually on credit cards. But if you get rid of that interest, you have that money to pay onto something else. If you get rid of one obligation, then you have the money you were paying on that obligation is freed up to pay cash for something else. And eventually you're on a cash basis, whether it's personal or whether it's the city or the county or the state. The whole world is so in debt, we cannot continue this way. So that brings me to what's called needs and wants. And that's the way I think you have to look at the budget. There are some very basic things. The role of government is public safety, including law enforcement, fire, and, um, police protection. It's to build and maintain public roads and bridges, see that those are maintained adequately. And I would say probably the, um, helping the youth who are in trouble to go straight because that does pay off and to be profitable, hard workers. Are our current things being fulfilled adequately? If they're not, then we can't afford the, the wants. The zoos and the, uh, the additions to the zoo, the additions to Botanica, the things that we like to do. I love all those places and I like to go there. But I'm not sure that they need to be adding expenses at this point. I think they probably can cut some expenses. We have to live within our means. We can't continue to live without, with outside our means. It's painful to cut back and I know that. I've been through it personally and in business. Sometimes you have to pull in and get to the down through the very core of what's necessary. And then as you grow better, you can expand back into some of those other things. And I understand that we are paying, um, now something like $5.7 million in principal and interest. If you're even looking at 3% to 5% interest, that amounts to quite a little bit of money. If that money can be paid off now incrementally and we don't take on any more debt, we can eventually get on a cash basis. And it looks like some of our debt is old debt that's been swallowed up by new debt. If that is true, and I think it is, then we are like people who are, uh, using their credit card to pay off the balances on other credit cards. And we're digging the hole deeper. And that doesn't make, uh, fiscal sense to me. Being fiscally responsible is a habit. Spending is a habit too. And it's a habit we need to cut back on. We cannot ever get out of debt if we, nationally and even here, if we don't cut back somewhere. And I don't envy your making that decision.
Shirley.
Yes.
Your, your time is up. We need you.
Oh, okay.
But we do have a question from a Commissioner.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Peter John.
Well, uh, thank you. Marshall, you, you mentioned a figure in terms of principal and interest payments and
Well, I may be wrong on that.
I'm, I'm looking at our proposed, the proposed budget before us. Uh, as prin- principal and interest costs for debt service, $18,843,980. So I just wanted to
$18 million? Okay.
Of course, that, that, a lot of that, that's, you know, going over, we're talking a couple of decades because the county often borrows 20 years.
Okay.
Since you raised the issue.
But aren't we building, aren't we borrowing money all the time for, uh, roads?
Uh, the county has been borrowing approximately $4 million a year for roads since I've been on the commission.
Okay, and how much interest are we paying off that? Paying on that?
The interest rates will, have, have varied at the time that it's issued. And, um, you're getting me, you're getting into an area that's a little bit deeper. I can give you the aggregate figures, but I'd like to go with you offline.
Okay, okay. I understand.
But
I understand.
But I wanted to just clarify that, that
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Are there any other questions?
No, but just to clarify for you.
Okay.
We, we do borrow $4 million a year for roads and bridges, but we've dug ourselves in a hole that we're paying $5-
a hole that we're paying $5.7 million in principal and interest. So if we're on a cash basis, we could pay $4 million for roads and bridges and have $1.7 million left over for all sorts of programs for the public. For example, we could build a new EMS station every single year and have money left over if we hadn't dug ourselves in that hole. And so...
Okay.
Beyond that, because we actually take some money out of that $4 million to pay principal and interest, we actually get $2.4 million worth of road bridge work for $5.7 million worth of...
Ouch.
So, but just to clarify, that's one small part of our debt, and Commissioner Peter John was talking about overall.
My main point is to make some differentiation between what is really, really the core role of government and mandatory, and what is an add-on to that that we'd like to do and maybe can't. Thank you.
James?
Good morning, Chairman Renzo, members of the commission, and happy birthday, Tim. James Roseborough, 4518 Greenbrier, and I'm here this morning as a private individual. I just want to say, I've heard a lot of talking this morning about quality of life, and I am a strong advocate for quality of life issues. And I just want to say, some of the cuts, without going on and emphasizing what I've heard here today, the people that we should be trying to help the most are the people that's going to be hurt the most with some of the cuts that I've heard here today. We talk about improving people up where they can be independent and make a living on their own, but if you start cutting education, WATC, and some of the other things that's going on, you're going to hurt the people that need that help the most. So I know some cuts need to be made someplace, but the ones with true quality of life issues that's out here, please keep those cuts to the smallest amounts possible. I just left, also I heard talked about core values. What are our core values? We, I don't care where we are today, if we got to on our own, somebody help you get there. And we owe that to the young, the millennials, or whatever you want to call them. We owe that to our young people, to give them an opportunity to make a decent living. I just came from the NUSA conference down in Houston, Texas, and Omaha, Nebraska was getting a NUSA conference in 2018. And the two things that they talked about down there, the first number one was the aquatic program and the zoo. And that went over real big. I would like to recommend, if you're going to make cuts, you need the partnership, improve the partnership with some of these agencies that's going to be cut, and just don't take money, because these people here are beneficial. Not only you go cut the educational level for some people, just think about the amount of people that you're going to put out of work. And the last thing I'd like to say, since we're doing cuts all over, has any of you guys ever thought maybe taking a pay cut yourself? Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, James. Colin McKinney?
Good morning, sort of commissioners. Thank you for making the time today. I'm Colin McKinney speaking today as chairman of the board of the nonprofit Chamber of Service. My business address is 4500 West Maple here in Wichita. And I've spoken to some of you in the past, and for some of you, you weren't here when the nonprofit chamber was formed 13, 14 years ago. If you weren't here at that time, you may not remember the reason why it came together, and that was, there was and has been a very significant working relationship between Sedgwick County and many nonprofit organizations. In some cases, that's a business relationship. And when those nonprofit organizations are not functioning in the best possible way, that has a ripple effect back to Sedgwick County. And so as we looked at some organizations at that time that were having difficulties, one of the solutions to that concern was creating a resource, in this case, the nonprofit Chamber of Service, which would offer training, outreach opportunities, and basically to serve as a resource for both staff members of nonprofit organizations and board members of those organizations. You all, as members of a very important board, understand how important it is that your board member is prepared, knows what the issues are at hand, and how to govern. And teaching governance is a big part of what the nonprofit Chamber of Service has done in the intervening years. The proposal at present is to decrease current funding levels from $20,000 a year down to $10,000. And as I look at member organizations who have and will continue to come speak to you, it does make a difficult case to talk about how do you prioritize? And you have to make that decision, and I do not. But what I would tell you is that, as you are looking at potential cuts to funding for some of the member organizations of the nonprofit chamber, you may also be cutting them twice if you also reduce funding for our services as well. We are a resource for large and small nonprofit organizations. We are a resource for the community as well. And I would just ask that, as you are looking to make these difficult decisions, you fully understand what it means to cut services through the nonprofit chamber, and try to minimize that or not cut at this time. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Peter John?
Just a quick question. What's your total budget for, say, last year?
About $108,385, give or take.
So about $108,000 roughly. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Diana Shun?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Diana Shun, the executive director for the Child Advocacy Center of Sedgwick County, 130 South Market. I'm here with two of our board members. Keith Marshall is our vice president, and Sister Janet Rowley is our secretary of the board. On behalf of the nearly 2,000 children of child abuse that we serve each year, and an additional 500 non-offending caregivers, I want to say thank you for your support. We recognize you have difficult decisions. In our current HRS $120,000 grant, 90% of our funding helps pay for direct services to victims of child abuse, and the other 10% for support services for those victims. Taking care of children and investigating child abuse crimes are essential to the health and to the future of our county. Thank you for your prior support, and we would greatly appreciate your continued support. I appreciate your time.
And thank you, Diana. Just to be clear, there are no proposed cuts to your budget, right?
Correct.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Next, we have Susie Santo.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Susie Santo, president and CEO of Visit Wichita 515 South Main. And I'm here today on behalf of our board of directors, our staffs, and our partners. And we are here today in support of our partners, Sedgwick County Zoo, Exploration Place, the Arts Council, Riverfest, and the Greater Wichita Area Sports Commission. The current draft budget has either eliminated the county's financial support or reduced the committed levels to these organizations, who provide entertainment and/or culture options that are important to Wichita and to the region. Why do visitors come to Sedgwick County? According to our visitor profile research, they come to our attractions, to enjoy our cultural performances, attend our festivals, or cheer on at a sporting event. These are the specific activities that are created by the organizations, which are directly impacted by the recommended budget cuts. Visitors spend over $1 billion in the Wichita MSA. And these dollars are important not only to our economy, but to the local mom and pop store on the corner, to our attractions, to our locally owned restaurants and our hoteliers, and to the partners that I'm referring to. We must have compelling product offering that drive visitors and their dollars to Wichita. Other communities are currently looking for ways to attract more visitors, so let's not go backwards. It has been stated many times today that these partners would not feel the impact of the county cuts. As citizens of our community, we look to the county to help create an environment that we are all proud to call home. This takes many partners working together. One could certainly envision a snowball effect, where one funder cuts and others do the same. If this were to happen, this would obviously put these organizations in a precarious financial position. These organizations do need the county's funding. So why eliminate funding when there seems to be an option on the table that would restore the funding to these organizations and to many others? We urge you to rethink this budget, to listen to the many citizens who are here today, and to stop the cuts. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Peter John?
Susie, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
I've got a question.
Sure.
Visit Wichita, it used to be known as the Greater Wichita Convention and Visitors Bureau, I believe. And what's your budget roughly?
Our budget is about $5 million, a little over $5.
And where does most of that money come from?
We are, all of our, well, I should say, probably 95, 98% of it comes from visitors who come to the Wichita area and stay in our hotels. So it all comes from visitors who spend the night in a hotel, either through a transient guest tax or a tourism fee. And then we do receive a small portion of our budget from our partners.
So most of the money comes from the city hotel motel tax?
Yeah, it comes from visitors who stay in our hotel and play either the transient guest tax or the tourism fee. So it does not come from the taxpayers unless they happen to check into a hotel.
Okay, so $5 million roughly?
About $5 million this year, a little over.
Let me ask you, how much of that money do you all contribute to the zoo or Exploration Place?
Well, our role, as you know, is to market not only the zoo and Exploration Place, but the entire community. That is why we exist. So we market the entire area to drive visitors here to spend their dollars. That's our role. So again, it's to market these amongst all of the attractions. And we need, quite honestly, we've got to have that product offering, as I talked about. That is why visitors have a choice. They have a choice on where they're going to go shop, where they're going to spend their discretionary leisure dollars. And that's why that product is so important, so that we can go out and market it and drive them to the community.
Well, there is a proposed reduction in Exploration Place for the county's supportive $75,000 a year.
Yeah.
Of course, the county is also supporting Exploration Place on the principal and interest too. But when you talked about cuts to the zoo, in terms of the dollar amount, this year the zoos, in 2015, and I'm excluding the supplemental appropriation for the Elephant Barn, a $5.3 million that was approved last year and paid this year, we're scheduled to spend $5,617,889. And the proposed budget funding contained in the budget book is $5,617,889. And for anyone who wants to do the math out there, they can see when you say cuts. I want to just get that on the record so that we have some accuracy in terms of the dollar amounts that are under discussion. I appreciate you coming down and speaking to us this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Todd?
Good morning, Chairman Renzo, and members of the board of Sedgwick County Commission. My name is John Todd. I live at 1559 North Payne, right here in Wichita, Sedgwick County, Kansas. First, I want to compliment you on the holding of a public hearing here today. I believe it is extremely healthy and productive for citizens to have an opportunity to debate around an issue that I see as, what is the proper role of government? In the last 100 years or so, government has grown huge, and along with its insatiable appetite for taxing, spending, and regulation. It's been driven by special interest groups with seamless claims on the treasury. Some of the programs, I couldn't argue with a lot of the programs that I've heard about today, they're wonderful programs. Government on the national level kicks the can down the road by borrowing money and putting the payment back on the shoulders of our children. I congratulate you for your thoughts I'm reading about, and getting away from borrowing money to do projects. Local government, as I see it, is a microcosm of our federal and state government. We love government as citizens, and in fact, in Sedgwick County alone, we have over 60 separate governmental units with taxing authority. The largest is USD 259 with $600, a current budget of $639 million. City Wichita, the current budget's $540 million. Sedgwick County, yours is in the range of around $409 million. If you add these up, it totals over $1.5 billion, and based on a population of 500,000, that's about 3,000 per capita. Does local government spend enough money? That's the question I'll be asking. It seems clear to me that this year, the City Wichita and the Wichita Public Schools are going to increase their budgets, and the numbers I'm seeing is $20 to $30 million each. And the USD 259 is proposing a tax increase on the citizens. I compliment the Sedgwick County, it's the only of the three that I see that is exercising restraint. And I think that we have hundreds of people, taxpaying people, out there who appreciate this restraint, because many of them are reeling from the effects of the recession. And at some point, we've got to have the argument about essential and non-essential functions of government, and to focus our money on the essential. And based on that, I compliment you for holding this public forum and letting us discuss these issues today. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Todd.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have Dr. Lucas.
My name is George Lucas. I live at 1715 North Cypress here in Wichita. I've been a physician for over 50 years, and one of my proudest accomplishments has been to participate in Project Access, and also an advocate for Project Access and the supporter of Project Access. And the success of Project Access in expediting health care for many of our less fortunate citizens is undeniable, and it must continue. There's not any question that there are many, many people in our county who are in need of the services that Project Access can provide, and to significantly defund that program is unconscionable. If time permitted, I could give you a lot of specific patient examples, but we don't have time for that. A good deal of my time as a physician has been resident education. And I have repeatedly emphasized to these young doctors about ethics. Ethics, in very simple terms, means fairness and justice. And there's no justice or fairness in a quixotic quest to create a budget that minimal taxation and eliminate funding for valuable programs such as Project Access. We're very proud of what we have been able to accomplish here in Sedgwick County, and we are considered a model for many other parts of the country. We can't continue, of course, without some financial support. I'm on the Ethics Committee of the American Academy of Orthopedic Surgeons, and when I tell my colleagues on that committee and other doctors that I know across the country that over 65% of the physicians of Sedgwick County willingly donate their services to persons in need, they're impressed. And you should be too. And the fact that I mentioned 65% of the doctors in the county, I think refutes a little bit of what Commissioner Renzo was saying earlier this morning. I have, I'm aware, Chairman Renzo, that you've had a career as a physician's assistant, and surely you've seen people who need the kind of help that Project Access can provide. Don't turn your back on these folks. When I came to Wichita 30 years ago or so, Rock Road wasn't completely paved. Yet we got along, and I submit to you that helping a few people with health care has more value than paving a road in rural Sedgwick County. And for you, Commissioner Peter John, I happen to know that you have inhabited for a short time, as did I, Athens County, Ohio, the poorest county in the state of Ohio. And I'm sure you've seen the skinny, malnourished men and women with one or two teeth who were dragging some bedraggled children along, and surely that's made some impression upon you. And for all of you, aren't many of your constituents who voted you into office, some of our underserved, they're deserved, they're not undeserved, they're underserved. And for the entire commission, I'm sure you're aware that Sedgwick County, Kansas, is nearly at the top of the list of locations in this great country of ours with the highest rate of infant mortality. That situation is not going to improve with cuts to funding of our Health Department and Project Access. I obviously feel strongly about the need to continue health care funding in our community, but I also recognize that the arts deserve support as well. And I think I can sum this up with a quote from Douglas Copeland, who incidentally coined the term Generation X. And whether you, whatever you think of him as a novelist or a commentator on social justice, I think he said it quite... justice, I think he said it quite succinctly. Quote, "To have a healthy culture, you have to have stable healthcare financing, stable arts financing, and stable sports financing. And if you don't have that, your culture becomes a parking lot." So please, don't let the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County become a parking lot. Thank you.
Commissioner Peter John.
Well, thank you, Dr. Lucas. An Ohio University connection.
Absolutely.
It's always a pleasure to see another person with Bobcat.
Go Bobcats.
Green and white. But, but I would hasten to, hasten to add that when I was down at Ohio University, because of the university being there and being a large and relatively stable employer, there were people from outside the area, from some of the neighboring counties, Washington, Galia, who would actually commute to, commute to jobs in Athens. And we were relatively, I, I won't argue with you that there was a poor factor there. In fact, there was a lot of discussions about poverty and how to alleviate it. And we set up the Great Society Program and began to spend trillions and trillions of dollars. Medicaid was established and, and despite Medicaid and more recently Obamacare, we still struggle with health and health and providing healthcare. And that's an area where I struggle because you get into areas of government involvement and personal responsibility and trying to set up a system where we can have effective, where people will take personal responsibility for their health. And if they, if they eat, eat too much and don't exercise enough, you know, it, you can certainly end up with chronic health problems. But I appreciate you coming down and, and visiting with us again, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Next, Commissioner Norton.
Before Dr. Lucas gets out of here, thank you very much for taking your time to come down here today. I know you have plenty on your plate otherwise. I've been a huge supporter of Project Access and the Health Department for many years. And we need to have physicians weigh in on the complications of what happens when we don't take care of some of these vulnerable situations in our population. And part of it is that the physician community has really stepped up in our community.
Absolutely.
I applaud them. What, a little bit of money the county puts in helps create the foundation, the platform, along with United Way and the, and the city, to garner that $15 million worth of, of care to people that are underserved, disenfranchised, uninsured. And I applaud the Medical Society, the, all the platform that has been put together to allow us to help out with that. So thanks for coming today and speaking.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Next, we have Betsy Anderson. While she's coming up, I want to say, I know we've had a number of people leave, and those people that were here and left, I would encourage them to email us or contact us through our, through our website because we would certainly still like to hear their comments. And Mr. Holt, could you see how many people, if there's other people in the waiting room or wherever seat, let's get a head count on how many people are actually left to speak because we were going to take a 30-minute break, but if there's only a handful, I would propose that we finish them off, so.
My name is Betsy Anderson. This is Wanda McCurry. We are here with the Kansas Junior Livestock Show. My address is 621 Union Park Circle in Colwich. We both live in Sedgwick County. Since 1933, the Kansas Junior Livestock Show has been held at four locations within Wichita. It began at the Wichita Forum until 1964, then moved to Wichita Union Stockyards for the next seven years. In 1973, the Kansas Junior Livestock Show moved to Sedgwick County 4-H Fairgrounds, and in 1978, moved to its longest standing location, the former Kansas Coliseum, Kansas Pavilions, from 1978 to 2014. At last year's show, we were informed that the people that owned the Kansas Coliseum were selling the main building that we use to Nayar. We are the largest, the largest livestock youth event. It didn't give us enough room. We had to find a new location. There was not a bigger location to serve all of our animals in this, in Sedgwick County. The Kansas Junior Livestock Show is the state's largest livestock youth event featuring goats, sheep, swine, and cattle for all Kansas 4-H and FFA members. This fall, the total of 760 4-H and FF members from 90 counties entered 126 steers, 308 heifers, 332 hogs, 131 gills, 275 market lambs, 228 ewes, 236 meat goats, and 105 commercial doe. So that's a lot of livestock. We are sad about our move, that we are moving to the Kansas State Fairgrounds. And we do, we want to thank you guys for your support for all of these years that you guys have helped us keep this show going and keep, keep the kids going. We are still holding our, one of our main events in Wichita. We are holding it at Cowtown. Our beefeater barbecue will be held on September 21st at Cowtown. That is one of our main events for the show. So we would like you to consider maybe helping us with the rent of Cowtown for that event. Do you want to go ahead?
That's right. Thanks. And our cost for renting the facility at Cowtown, which we're very excited about doing, is $4,200. So we realized there has been a significant reduction in, in zero that you were going to provide to our show, but we just wanted to really clarify with you that we still have a major part of our organization and an event in Sedgwick County and are very excited about keeping it in Cowtown as a great venue for us. We're going to rent the entire grounds and bring in about 1,400 Wichita business community members. We serve steaks. Cargill's a big part of that. We have other groups come in as well. We have a band. We're going to employ some volunteers to do a gunfight. So we're really going to make Cowtown stand out at our event too. So anyone who's not been visiting lately would get a chance to see the great things in Cowtown. But we do have part of our event still continuing in Wichita. Wanted to make that clear with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Commissioner Howell has some questions.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you both for being here and how my voice holds out. But I've not had a chance to speak with either one of you before today, and, and so this is, I'm really glad you came so you can answer a couple of questions. I, I do see, again, I asked staff to provide some data regarding total budget of different organizations, and they told me that the budget for junior livestock was $425,000. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're talking approximately, Sedgwick County donates just about 5% of your total funding?
Correct.
Okay. And can you tell me who, who donates that $425,000 besides Sedgwick County?
Well, we have fees. We have entry fees and things such as that. So most of that $425,000 goes back to the kids. So it's awarded in premiums.
So do you have, so Sedgwick County and, and fees, that's it?
Well, okay, so, no. We do have other, we do have other sponsors, along with Sedgwick County.
And we have looked to find, you know, new sponsors too in terms of when we knew that budget cuts might be coming, forthcoming. And we know the reality out there. So we have looked for other sponsors to come in and work towards our event. But what Betsy's saying is of that, about $200,000 does go back out as award money to those young people. So we bring in money, but we also give it right back out to the 4-H and FFA kids.
And sponsors are, sponsors are things like businesses and that type of thing throughout the community?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, we have James Kilpatrick. I don't see James here. Is that? No James Kilpatrick. Lynn Stefan?
She's in the other room.
Miss manager, how many people do we have?
We know there's seven for sure in the other room that are still on the list to speak. We know a few ran to plug meters or grab a quick bite to eat with the thought that they would come back based on the break for lunch, so.
Okay, well then, we'll just, we'll just, do we need to make a motion? No, we'll just, we'll, we'll stand in recess now for 30 minutes, and the next people to speak will be Lynn Stefan and Pat Layman, Sharon Dyer. So we'll, we'll be back in 30 minutes.
Maybe James Kilpatrick.
Yeah, James Kilpatrick will get you. Okay.
Ah.
Thank you.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to county commission broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita